Everybody situated. So. Great, so it's thirty, we'll call to order the Thursday, February second budget meeting number two. We would like to welcome Karen and Karen, I'm gonna goof it up again, it's Rusi.
Rusi.
Rusi, I didn't goof it up, I almost got it correct, so, and as our newest committee member and welcome to committee, former councillor John, John Hunter. We went through the process on Monday night of appointing and doing our committee selections, it was a challenge for sure, where there were so many fantastic applicants this year and it took a while for the group to come to consensus on exactly who was sitting at the table, we're welcoming you too, we're excited about having you here, we can't wait, it's it's fantastic to have John's experience and yours is fantastic as well, so thank you for for being willing to step forward and join us, I'm glad to have you back as well. Feels weird to not call you councillor. I keep calling him councillor himself, so you know. The challenge, so I guess the first item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda, are there any changes or you know, anything to add to the to the agenda at all, no, so it's approval of the agendas presented, so if somebody can move that, moved by councillor Smale, second by councillor Ward. Discussion all in favor? Disclosure, cunior, any press in the government legislature thereof, does anyone have any disclosures tonight?
I have one, Mr. Mayor, it'd be seven C, number four, and the paperwork has been filled out and the clerk has it.
Seven C, seven C, number four, yes, okay, thank you. Uh, paperwork, clerk has it, good, and any further declarations at all? None, moving on to business arising from committee, the whole meeting minutes, if any, does anyone have any business arising from minutes? Hearing none, we'll go on to number five, which is delegations and presentations, there are none, and we are on to number six, which which is the discussion items, and that is the crap, the draft capital budget. Goes to the C A O. Shall I? I prefer to have staff present. So it seems more relevant, I mean, we can have a discussion about the entire the entire capital, the way that the way that it is there, but does it not make more sense to start at seven A and let staff do the presentation of each item and the business case behind each item? Then we can come back for the discussion after that?
Mr. Mayor, I think it would probably serve to have the treasurer just do a quick overview of that capital analysis and then have the have have the individuals present their business cases and then we'll return back to the into a bigger discussion maybe again.
Yeah.
If that works for you.
Especially with, you know, the committee members getting up speed on business cases and stuff before we break any discussions and explore, get more sense. Okay, so let's open the floor, if everyone's comfortable with that little change, I think, outing aheads. Yes, good, so.
Great.
Stand to some view, go ahead.
Sure. So what I just want to do was go over this really, really quickly, so this was everything that went through in budget meeting number one. It would be the draft twenty twenty-three capital budget funding analysis, Stephen. Now.
Page five of one oh five?
Yeah, page five of one oh five, sorry. The reason when we met that budget meeting number one, council requested that there be more projects put on here, so it would be a more robust discussion, so really all that I'll talk about here is what was added for for discussion and won't really spend a lot of time on anything else, so I mean, for the benefit of the new members, I'll just run through, talk to bottom. So for administration, the two items that we have is the township office renovation upstairs and then a server replacement, and as of now, the thirty-five thousand would come from taxation. I'm gonna skip over the the two highlighted ones as far as number one and number two, just because I'll go over that at the bottom, just it will just be that way. Spencerville Drainage and Johnstown Drainage, those are carryover items from twenty twenty-two, and that whip amount is actually covered by the loan proceeds that we haven't drawn on the loan from infrastructure Ontario. Waste disposal site, I don't think anything is new on here from the last budget meeting. Recreation, the one thing that we did add at the mayor's request was to put the Cardinal Tennis Courts back onto this list as a discussion item. The only thing we have for funding right now is forty-five thousand dollars from the Johnstown Port of Johnstown C C R. Public Works, nothing new there, the tandem or the tandem trucks tender closes on February fourteen, so then we'll have an idea of timelines deliveries and we can provide an update once the tenders have been processed. I think as we get to the resurfacing roads, that was where there was some new items added the direction of the director of operations and the manager of public works. Just some patent overlay projects for Armstrong, Cedar Grove, Glen Snail and Suffia. And just in the comments, it's just the length of road covered and the width and the depth of paving. And these are all pattern overlay, they're not total resurfacing, so the timeline on that would be about a ten-year replacement on that, rather than if you rebuild a road, you get the sixty replacement on a lot. Edison and Mary were carryovers from last year. And the engineering survey costs are just related to some of those projects, whether a pattern overlay will be sufficient, or there should be a complete reconstruction of the road. And if it's complete reconstruction, that that changes the capital discussion. Moving on to page two, which would be all of the rate-based capital. And there were no changes from from the last last budget meeting, so all of this will be covered in the business case presentation. So just to go quickly over the notes, with the highlighted in yellow, the four point two million represents just the engineering survey, not the actual tender, that tender closes on February seventh. And then, once we have that, we will know what the total cost of the project is. Whether it's gonna be done in twenty twenty-three or whether it'll stand in twenty twenty-four, as if we get that idea from the the tenders, then we can split that cost into two years. Also, we should know then what the county's contributions could be, and then we'll know what we're expected to pay, we had initially targeted at it to be just under a million dollars, so nine hundred and fifty thousand would be the township's responsibility, and then we could look at how we want to how we want to pay that, whether we want to use a combination of a adventure reserves. We just do have some funding to allocate, so we can look at all those options, what we know what the final cost of timeline is going to be. Note two, just related to the Newport Drainage. The county has done their side of that drainage project, we have to do our side. The total estimated cost is three hundred thousand, so we would we would pay that upfront, so similar to like we're doing for the drainage projects we have now that we're basically financing it for the people that receive the benefit of that, and then they they pay the township back, so the outlay of capital from the township's perspective would be fifty-five thousand dollars. And without going into any more detail, would prefer just to transfer it back over to the business owners to your case.
Thank you. One thing for the benefit of committee members, acronym C C F in reference to money coming from the port for the Johnstown Tennis Court, C C F refers to Community Capital Fund, right, C C F, so the port does seventy-five thousand dollars worth of donations a year. Organizations, non-for-profits have to apply for that funding. Sierra, the South Edwardsburg Integration Association applied last year to have the tennis court sit in Johnstown resurface, they got a grant from the board for forty-five thousand dollars. That's what C C F means, and that's where that money comes. Okay, so so we'll just walk through this the way that it is then, so we would go to seven A, which is the business case for the township officer, at least. Correct.
Correct, alright. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the we we have a sponsor managing our I T services and as part of the plan to stay sort of current, up to date with our with with our I T system. One of the items on the twenty twenty-three plan would be to replace the the server here in the municipal office. It had a five-year life expectancy, which would have been in the fall of twenty twenty-two. We did, we have extended the warranty to cover intervening time, but it is due to be to be replaced this year and a proactive replacement where we control the circumstances of when that gets replaced versus sort of a failure and added downtime and inability to access some of the key pieces of information that we need in the time of the, I mean, fashion, so. The the estimated cost is to an upset limit of of thirty-five thousand. And I think that's also going to give us an opportunity to clean up a little bit of the the wiring and some labeling in and around that, that that also needs to be done at that same time, so. At this stage, it is just based on the revenue source being from taxation, however, there is the ability to to take some of it from the administrative reserve, a portion, all of it, or 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 one out of it, so at this stage, but I think that bringing this forward as at 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 an item that that should be needed in the in the twenty twenty-three budget. Happy to 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 answer any questions.
Right, open the order of questions to committee members from council.
Sure, hey, first of all, do we have a backup by the server as well?
So through through the mayor, we do have some odds off on off site backups with respect to that.
And the only other question I have is, did we look at, do they recommend or even they recommended, which is why we're here? Just having a total online service, I know some businesses run that way as well, and so that's something that that happened, you know, in the process of doing that, so.
So that 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 option has been considered, but I think we're still we're looking at the last night.
None of them? Mr. Stan?
Karen?
John?
Just I want, what's the timeline, it won't affect us or everyday business in the chair to the CEO?
Through the mayor, part of the implementation plan is to try to to minimize that downtime, we'll do as much pre-planning with respect to that, so to shorten the duration down, so we minimal disruption.
I'm good, thank you. Right. Let's just keep going through, we'll come back for a full discussion after, so. So, public works budgets, we would look at county road two, road infrastructure and reconstruction. This one. We don't, we don't have tender numbers or anything yet. Where it's a tender, it's coming back on the fourteenth. So, seventh, okay, so. So another week, we don't know whether it's passed through. Well, we have those discussions, the seventh and the eighth that at counties. This one's not leaving tonight by any stretch of the imagination. Do we want to do a brief overview of it, but not really get into a prolonged discussion about it, I think until we actually know the full implication of it, and I mean, there's lots of funding behind it, but I'm not really sure that it's certainly not, I don't think it's gonna leave tonight, so. Until we have the full information, is it worthwhile? Brief overview for for committee members, and then we can save it into budget three?
I I through through the mayor, I think it would add some value to give a little bit of background to the to the project, as it is a big project.
Yeah, nine, nine applications for funding, like it's
Yeah, it's been, it's been an extended time period, looking for actually becoming successful in receiving that that funding, so. Valuable, the executive director of operations provide just a brief
Yeah, overview, sure, sure, if you if you would, Mr. Shaw, that would be fantastic.
Sure. The operation departments, including the county road two infrastructure project in twenty twenty-three budget. Since twenty twenty, the township's been applying to different streams to try and get some funding, the original project was running from Shannon Road to the very eastern limit of the county road two corridor, and we were unsuccessful through many attempts. In the twenty twenty-one investing in Canada infrastructure program, the the green stream intake focused on potable water only. Previous ones were water storm sewer and reconstruction. Township that applied for this funding and we were successful in partial funding from the provincial and federal governments. Three-way cost sharing program with the township. The proposed project is a reduced scale, which runs now from approximately seven thirty-eight counter to east approximately where the power station is. From that point to the west is P D C pipe, and the cast iron starts about that area, so basically it'll run from there and to just east of Metalance. Plan includes looping water from Walker Street to provide another avenue of redundancy for the feed from the north and south of County Road Two, that could be through the daytime water fed to the whole system from water plant pressure. And at night, when the plant shuts down, the tower applies the pressure to feed back the other way, so. We only have two roofs currently, one Shannon Road, the other one would be the Senate Tap at Dishaw. So this will hook up, it'll provide a better flow of water, pressure pressure stream and and supply of water and provide that third redundancy at Walker. Staff and Jewel have been collaborating with United Townies in regard to design and funding incorporate localize storm sewers, road curbs, sidewalks, and also included ingredient as they invested in the railroads heard, and it will affect their their logistics and so forth when that project's going on. So far, we've had fifty document views and takes, thirty-four takes and sixteen just views, so thirty-four companies have requested tender documentation. February seventh, the tablet and the results will be available for council's consideration at later meeting. For the options and solutions, ring status quo, we risk losing the provincial and federal contribution of potentially based fifteen degree main break, fifteen structure, fifteen to depreciate. Maintain the County Road Two project in the twenty twenty-three budget, review tender submissions and and consider recommendations by Jewel. Impacts, option one, status quo, the option has no budget impact directly, but increased credential for water breaks. And poor quality, poor bought quality water during the break system is a possibility. Option two, Jewel estimates the cost construction is four point two million. And I C I P application is provided for two point one million to complete the County Road Two project. The federal government would contribute eight hundred forty-four thousand dollars and the provincial seven hundred three thousand leaving the township. With a five hundred sixty-two of the original estimate for just the water made at two point one million. The counties have committed to proposed budget in twenty twenty-three to reconstruct local storm sewers and roads within its authority and scope of the project. Replacement of the sanitary sewer would be the sole responsibility of the township. The risk associated remaining status quo is that we maintain a high potential for vein breaks that inconvenience users and threaten integrity of the potable water within the distribution system. High cost repairs, town equipment, staff availability. During winter storm events, operator fatigue should also be considered, and the last double break, we had people that were there all night and part of the next day, and you know, fatigue was showing up in those cases, and we had let the public work staff go early as the snowstorms approaching, we had to have them fresh for and and within their C D R, the number of hours allowed, get ready for that storm, so it made some juggling, they had to get a contractor in the back hole with a few things up. It's notoriously the highest spot for races from Shannon Road to the western boundary of the project. If you have a look at the picture, you can see the County Road Two project limits. They're on there in the just pictorial. And there's a listing of water main breaks. And there's a couple of maps showing the water main breaks, and you can see that the corridor from Dishaw really to that far western extent of the project is where the majority of the breaks have occurred since two thousand and eight. There's probably more, those are the ones we have documented. If there's any questions that I can help with?
Yeah, sure, so just open it to to the floor for a discussion on it, then I not sure of much, but there's a lot more questions than there is, there's more information. Does anyone have any questions right now for? Just just a quick, so we're closing on the seventh, as the chair, so does it even be available right away the results, or maybe you have a bit of a time for you guys to analyze that first?
Through the answer, through the mayor, we'll we'll have to take, depends, depending on the number and and the the volume of submissions, we will probably probably want to do is return that, the results, and most likely the next budget meeting, so so we have a a true picture, by that time, we should, we should know what the the county contribution is, and we should know the label area in a little bit more detail, what 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 almost cost and some potential finance and options.
Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to to B two then, which is the the business case for the Scott Road, the Spenceford site. And I assume the public work ones will, are they, are they all with Mr. Shaw, or are they with, yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm busy for this one, and basically in July twenty fifteen, the township received proof from Ministry of Environment to basically seize the land from the site, there was still a preset limit. So and and basically, you can do, have it closed. Operations and temporary operations waste fair transfer station, the Scott Road landfill site was developed. A condition of approval, approval requested that updates to be provided to the ministry. The construction of the proposed transfer station and or plan to make the temporary operations at that landfill site permanent. So there was a consultation was done with J P two G. They did a little study and basically looked at three different spots for a transfer station. The existing site, there was the Pittsburgh site, and there was another site on Blair Road, which is where we have the butternut plantation that was done. They developed a report and basically found that they felt was the Scott Road site was was the most suitable. So in February of twenty twenty-one, J P two G had a pre-consultation with officials from the M E C P. The township that sent letters of requesting feedback from the funding landlords as part of the E C A initiation and no concerns were received. In early January twenty twenty-two, the M E C P provided a draft amendment for review by staff and J P two G. The comments on the review were forwarded to M E C P for consideration, and M E C P issued the final E C A on January thirty first. The options on those are basically the main status quo. Determine what aspects of the project were that could be done, completed, and allocated time and resources permitting. Option two, budget one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to prepare and move forward with the detailed design and complete some preliminary work in house. Unless J P two G provide detailed drawings established up to date cost test, that's for the work to terminate phasing requirements. The original cost of twenty fourteen was two hundred thousand dollars for the project. Remaining status quo for financial enough, financial benefits. This option doesn't offer the ability to improve safety efficiency of the transfer site activities. Or option two, you will continue to process a separating the transfer station operation with the closed Scott Road landfill site. So once the township decides to go ahead with the new transfer site into commission, basically under the M E C A, you're required to get two weeks prior notice to the M E C P director for before starting the site up. Risk analysis, option one is that ministry may require the township to move ahead with the project at any time. This was discussed in previous council, and because it's a temporary site right now, they could basically tell us at any time to go ahead and get it done. Without enough budget to complete the project, so there is a reserve balance of ninety-one thousand for the closing of the transfer, sorry, of the landfill site in reserves, with help offset that risk. There's an issue with the existing site with respect to tire storage and its proximity to brush piles associated burning. There was a fire in twenty twenty that had to be reported to the M E C P Spills Action Center. And additionally, burning on top of very garbage carries a risk of ignition and a good burn for a determined amount of time, but you know, you don't get out of it. So option two helps to mitigate the risks associated with option one, allows the base to be unloaded from a gradually elevated position. That includes a guardrail. This is recent deeds of my residence, utilizing service and pickup, drop off by the transport container contractor. There's a small drawing, this is just the planning drawing, that noted in the original study. Basically, at the bottom, the hash mark markings around curve at the bottom is Blair Road, Ronald Scott. That there's an open rollouts that leads up through there, and then that's kind of
Got your glasses, you've got your glasses, your glasses, you're ready to rock now, I see this. All right, so certainly this one's been on, it's been on since I started on council, talked about it several times, and we've been, we've been looking at diagrams and trying to find ways. I have one question before we start, any discussion on this one, and it's to the C A O, and I apologize for this today, but and I didn't put it in my notes to ask, so service delivery review, was there anything about this in our service delivery review? You remember, I know that's not a fair question.
Mayor, I I don't think there was anything specific with respect to the on the transfer site itself.
I know with the, I'm pressed about it and disgusted at theirs. There there was for theirs, and and through the service delivery review, it made some suggestions on how to increase revenue through the design of of their transfer site, but I wasn't, I didn't have time to look through our document to see if there was anything in it, and I forgot, so. Apologies.
Not that, not that, not that I recall, but cer- certainly part of the part of the design will be to make it a little bit like modular and that in that sense, so that we have we have good separation, but we could expand, you know, that we have the potential to expand into some additional products if needed, and if there's, you know, there's the desire in that end of it, because there is substantially more space than what exists in that. Uh, substantially more space than what exists in that uh, we we within that current footprint of the uh, of the closed landfill site. Um, and staff does a very good job at 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 trying to keep things organized and separated, but there's limited space and uh. Certain times of the year with the uh, with the traffic in there, but it doesn't take very long for. Uh, items to fill up there, so uh, yeah, I I certainly um, uh, some foresight in in developing a. More uh, permanent long serving uh, site.
Thanks for that. Uh, okay, so opening the floor to two questions, comments, concerns before we move to the next agenda. Anyone? Answer, sir?
Uh, through the mayor, the C O, if and when we get this up and running, our uh, transfer site will be open more than once a week.
Uh, through the, yeah, through through the mayor, uh. The uh, the practice has been uh. Well, since, since I, I can remember, it's only been the Saturday morning uh, opportunity. I know that there has been some discussion. Uh, in in previous councils about uh, extending uh, the uh, the hours to 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 more than just uh, once a week. Um. If if that's something that um, that that committee has uh, some 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 interest in, we could, we we could love to evaluate that. I think uh, from a set from a. There, 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 there may be some limitations with 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 the current system staffing of being able to extend that. Because typically it's it's the Saturday, which is typically the day, a a day off and the employee can attend.
Wouldn't have an impact as of right now though, because we're really in this budget, but really for the hundred and twenty five, we're just looking at preliminary work and. And design.
Correct. I I would anticipate that we will probably uh, a cou- a couple of years have been formed in discussion.
Yeah, a good question, for sure. Uh, further. Yes.
Uh, just uh, just one through the chair to make another point that also through our E C A, there's a a kind with the dump to be opened for the transportation, sorry. Uh, two, so that would have to probably be amended definitely, but I don't know that that would be a major problem, but just.
Something. Said her to, said something her to. Can be.
It it just say, I I think it just takes some time uh, with 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 respect to go through that process, but I don't, I I honestly think that's something that's uh, you know. Difficult to answer, man. If there's the, if there's a desire.
Okay, uh, further discussion on this one before I move ahead?
Just uh, as a quick question through the chair, when we are talking about potential future expansion, what are we expanding into when you're talking the? The bustable or compost, so just more room to what we have? Define expansion point, so uh, through the mayor, uh.
I would, I would say that. How we would do it right now is. Basically, the uh, the products that we're receiving right now, we would continue to receive that. But I think what 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 I guess where I'm going is that there is enough space that if there's. Interest to to investigate and look into some some additional um. Areas that we may want to look at, then you know, I think the opportunity exists right now. Even if we wanted to expand into something different, there's there, there, there's no footprint to do that, so. I'm not suggesting that we do uh, expand it, but I think there's potential as, you know. Uh, who knows what will uh, uh, what will come in 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 three to five years, maybe there's, you know, maybe there's a demand for something that uh, that that we may be able to do.
So there's nothing specific.
Not nothing specific or imminent, but uh, but it's, it's just that the potential exists, I think, from from a spacing standpoint.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, you know, to for to further that, if you're thinking, you know, of of when this, you know, when you refer to the design, it's certainly a discussion that that we could. We can certainly have around this table. If there was something that you wanted included in the design, then that would be the time. That, so you're suggesting like a compost here or something. Yeah, I think it's.
So that's three bedroom house, we don't look for a bedroom and it's all lost, right?
So good. Thank you. Uh, okay, further discussion? Uh, just so we talked about a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars there. Actually, first and foremost, um. Appreciate and respect the fact you can share it to people in the area who never had it as well. I think that's since I get started. Um, as far as a hundred and twenty five, that's in addition to the ninety one, that's already set aside, it sounded like we had, or is that?
Through the chair, no, no, that's aside from the ninety one. Um, I think if you chose to use the ninety one as a portion of them, that's probably possible considerations.
No, I bet. So in other words, this is a break on two sixty, we haven't been reserved for this. Uh, and it'll cost more than that on what I was saying. To the C A, yes, yeah, yes.
Uh, so a portion of that uh. Ninety one is really uh, of that reason, it's set up for uh, a closed landfill site. Should something uh, arise in that regard, that 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 needs to be addressed. More than it's really specific for more reserved to expand a uh, a transfer site.
So. Sounds good. And then just last but not least, you know, we talked about a hundred and twenty five again. Um, that, but we also had a lot of our, a lot of hours put in for our staff. Um, working, working, and everything else. Is that inclusive of that? In other words, is that already part of our other budget or is that extra hours essentially to do that?
Through the chair, uh, though that's ex- exclusive, if uh, you call from the business case back in uh, twenty fourteen or fifteen, it was two hundred thousand dollars for the whole project. We will certainly try to get in there, do what we can. Uh, we're hoping to get in and do some brushing right now, but right now the ground isn't frozen hard enough and that that uh, we probably lose the. The high hole in there, so there. We'll wait for the right conditions. If we can get in and do it, we'll do what we can to to reduce the cost, of course, uh, and time permitting, because uh. We have winter maintenance right now, so it's a little tough, and then get the thaw. It's that kind of thing. So it's, it's quite swampy in that area and we need to be built up a fair enough.
Did you?
I just. Maybe you give the council of the day a little background information on any of the rocks that started. Council of the day basically started this project due to the safety concerns at that time, there had been a fire on the Cardinal dump that was next to it. Council was very concerned over why a building of a fire could start there. We did have a minor one, we're lucky. And so we. The goal was to go over there and have more space. Be able to put more contained containers in that we wouldn't be living at that container filled that. Had to put it. And it was. Our design, if you look at at it, was that people could drive up and separate. I think there's six containers there now that we planned on that we could. Have more separation. At that time, we figured there'd likely be more recyclable breakdown that they. To get a bigger, better, we could maybe get a price out of some of it, that if we broke down into separate. Either cost is less to get it taken away, or maybe actually get paid something for. The glass or the tin or something that was separated better. And give a plate, because I know a lot of residents in the Cardinal that time were looking for a compost. Area, so this area gave us enough room for a compost area to be there. And also it give us the option of the council of the day, depending on the money they wanted to spend, we could possibly. Think about go moving ahead, head and once again taking building material. Waste into an area that could be later trucked, trucked away. So that was the background behind like. The prices changed, but we always had the option of our work crew doing a lot of the prep work. Over a longer period of time, but we didn't get it. The council changed and it didn't happen. The council of the day's idea was that it would be a four or five year project. And we get a lot of that two hundred thousand, we figured we could do with in-house. Clearing, building around, getting a lot of it could be done if we didn't have. Staff didn't have to win rate, we worked for two weeks at a time to do it, I think. At half day that we're video, okay, we're going, we'll leave the hot floor out there, web chip. We'll leave a loader out there, we'll rent a dozer or something for a day. And we figured we could save a lot of costs and eventually get it done without. Really affecting our budget too heavy, so I have a background behind it. Up to council today, what could do with mirrors.
Yeah, the need still hasn't changed. The need's still there. Thank you. The background's fantastic. Uh, further? Anyone? All right, here now, let's move on. We're road bridge. All right, sorry, number three, uh, total range road.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Uh, public works department is including full depth reconstruction of the old ranch load proposed in twenty twenty three council budget. Um, total rise road is value road shared between the Spur Cardinal and North Granville. Um, maintenance typically involving grading, granular uh, the spring and fall months and ice plating in the winters. Particularly a surface requires proper gravel application every two to three years. Under an agreement between municipalities, uh, and and Spur Cardinal undertakes the maintenance on East Branch and North Brenner, Brenville undertakes maintenance on the west portion of Golden Ranch Road, so that's in forty sixteen. In uh, twenty twenty one, uh, staff and and council for both municipalities have received concerns on road conditions from residents of Golden Ranch Road. Requested that the East Branch be considered for surface treatment. Uh, the road has drainage and base conditions uh, issues that make uh, difficult to maintain. And twenty twenty one contact was made with Dorf Granville and. Like the township staff and discussion was made on on doing some work on that road. Um, Dorf Granville agreed to undertake the lead in the project, uh, the township, Dorf Granville have worked together uh, in the past. Um, most notably on Latimer Road with uh, a double surface treatment and slurred. Coke, and there was very positive results in that. They take the lead in that one, so was. Uh, we've decided to undertake the work over a two year period. First, they were looking at the surface treatment, but under discussion because of the two uh, fairly. Large businesses, I'd say, um, on on the road. We thought that would probably better off going with the hot mix surface rather than surface treat. And so we decided to take the work over two year period, first year includes road base improvements, ditching in addition to gravel. And the second year within a three seven meter wide length of asphalt to go complete the project. Uh, the work was authorized uh. And budgeted for in by E C council in twenty twenty two, but was deferred in North Granville. Um, options or solutions remain status quo, continue to maintain the road by creating in addition of gravel. This makes the least uh, desirable option as the road is faced with drainage issues that make it difficult and costly to maintain for any reasonable amount of time. Uh, it's located in the very north extent of the township and travel time for the maintenance is proportionally high, is greater than these traps and testing public works facility. Um, option two reconstruction is the desired option, reduce maintenance cost and more consistent surface will uh. Be achieved to serve the residents and two commercial businesses along the road. Reconstruction also falls in line with the objectives of the gravel road study that was undertaken in twenty twenty two to reduce travel time and costs, so it can be the most distant ground remotely. Financial uh, and non-financial benefits, option one, remain status quo. This has no. Direct uh, impact on the on the budget, but doesn't address the relevance concern, the road maintenance. And doesn't uh, address the rising cost of maintenance in terms of materials, staff, type, fuel, and equipment wear and tear. Option two, full depth reconstruction will reduce maintenance cost by reducing or eliminating need for adding gravel, grading, associated costs. Subway grade. Uh, project is proposed to be undertaken over two year period with a share estimate of cost of two thousand six hundred. Or two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars, one hundred twenty three thousand from each municipality of twenty twenty three for base improvements. The gravel and one hundred eighty thousand in twenty twenty four, ninety thousand each for automatic asphalt surface application.
Good question. Good, thank you. Uh, let's open that up for discussion, just for clarity. First, we. I reached out to North Granville. I didn't hear anything back from them. Have we heard anything on North Granville about other budget deliberations are going?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we have not heard yet if that, if if uh, if the uh, if the project has uh. Has made the list yet or not, um, so. We'll continue to monitor and have conversations uh, in in that regard.
All right, so let's open it for just, let's go to the same and see if anybody, anybody, they take their. No? Anybody? Just wanted to know. Of course. Yeah, but. We, so we did approve this last year. Order reconstruction and the paving, I don't remember the paving, but I remember the reconstruction. Thank you for the ground regrout.
If I, if I'm not mistaken, in uh, in in twenty twenty two, there was uh. I believe it was a hundred and twenty thousand or in in the uh. In the budget to do that work with them, um, with uh, North Granville occurring, uh, we we pulled that uh, amount out. So uh, we run back for and putting it there, which is uh, removed from the budget.
And um. Just is, so it's not surface treatment. Somewhere in my head, I had a, as surface treatments, it actually is. Like hot mix asphalt, right?
And uh, Mr. Mayor, that is correct.
Uh, any further questions before we move on to we reach? Anyone? Okay. Continue on Mr. Shaw.
Okay, so this one is for the uh. Operation department is including the rear uh, road bridge maintenance and repair project in twenty twenty three capital. Which is. Um, early in May of twenty two. Uh, Keystone Bridge conducted an O S M I M O uh, inspection of the township's fourteen bridges, some bridges in large shelters. Uh, resulting report identified rear road bridge as a priority for maintenance and repair in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. That's the exact report. The report outlines various efficiencies, provides recommendation type rates for investment and capital needs cost investment breakdown. Options are remain status quo, leave the bridge as is and look to full remediation in twenty twenty four. Replace the expansion joints in twenty twenty three as recommended in the inspection report, look at budget and finish the maintenance in twenty twenty four. Up in one, uh, we status quo, this has minimal impact on budget, but leaves the bridge itself with further degradation and plating costs to medium. Option two, the total cost rehabilitation is estimated at seven hundred ninety four thousand dollars. Which includes twenty percent for contracting station and contingency. Uh, the report indicates that an expansion joint portion of rehabilitation should be undertaken in twenty twenty three. At an estimated cost of hundred seven thousand eight hundred plus twenty percent for seating and contingency. Um, the balance uh, will require work written in for twenty twenty four. Risk associated with the main status quo is the bridge will continue to degrade that that that. Uh, expansion joints are utilized uh, basically as seals between the deck of the bridge and the roadway. So they're kind of an important point to help preserve the integrity of the bridge.
Good, thank you. Uh, questions, comments from? Yes, I'll go.
Sure.
So it's safe to assume, I'm assuming that if we don't do this, then the cost will be lower when we go to repair in twenty twenty four.
Through the chair, it's hard to to determine, but uh, as water gets in there and so forth, there's metal components so far on the ends. And less falling the the spin work so.
What I think through the, I think just through the mayor, I I would say in this particular case, it's more likely that it will deteriorate more and 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 more costly. Uh, with them, with with them at least during this portion in twenty twenty three.
Yeah, the joints. Um, the only question, if everybody else done, the only question that I that I had in regards to, in regard to this, sorry. Um, is. When I was going through and I'm just going to make an assumption and I don't, I just want to clear up my assumption. And under, uh, it's on page thirty six, one oh five, and so it's. Um, you know, the embankment portion, and there was just a maintenance item that said remove brush and tree, so, but I didn't see it budgeted anywhere and I didn't see any. Uh, costs for that, is it safe? My assumption would be that we would do all of that work ourselves then, is that why it wouldn't cost anything or? uh, costs for that. Is it safe? My assumption would be that we would do all of that work ourselves, then is that why it wouldn't cost anything or is it?
Through the chair, that's correct. We, we intend to get at that hopefully during the spring this year. The staff have also done, there's a couple of pictures in there of the bridges, uh, spalling on the deck. Staff did some patchwork, put some quick creed on there, but temporary effects for now, at least they'll tide us over should, uh, the council decide to build in twenty twenty-four.
Is that something that, like our brusher, like that we would clean all of that stuff out with that, or is that more of a physical thing where people are gonna have to go in there and clean that up?
Through the chair, it will be, uh, uh, the greatest portion would be with the brushet. It can reach over and get most best stop and clearly so that anything else such as remaining staff may have to, uh, do some, uh.
So there's no real huge cost associated to it. I, it just, it wasn't in there and, and I, it just, the other work was at zero, so I just wanted to make sure exactly what we're getting into. Okay, uh, further questions in regard to the way the bridge?
Um, that's one oh seven plus twenty percent contingency, sorry, hundred seven thousand if we okay that.
Through the chair, I believe that's correct.
Okay, thank you. And when it's, I had one of the question, I just got it here. Um, if, if there was a, uh, you know, it's, it'll be a tall, tall bill for twenty twenty-four for the rest of the balance of this. Is there a, a logical second thing that would be considered on this one between twenty-three, you're trying to split it more equal?
Uh, through the, uh, through, through the mayor, uh, I, I would suggest that if, uh, you want to more, um, balance it that a little bit more, I, you could always put a, a portion into reserves, uh, that, you know, you're earmarked for that, uh, for that bridge replacement in, in twenty twenty-four, and you're not needing as much, um, um, directly out of, uh, in, in twenty twenty-four year. So that's, that, that is certainly an option, uh, for, for consideration.
Yeah, oh, fair enough. I, I was, I was more considering scope, I mean, that cost treatment with inflation, we never know what happens in next year and so. Yeah, and if I can, so come pairing, like, is this one that came to directly because of the state of the bridge, or is it something that came out of the asset management?
Uh, so through the, through, through the mayor, the uh, the, the bridges in large culverts are required to be inspected every, every two years. And part of the, uh, part of that two-year, um, inspection and report actually, uh, provides us, uh, with the the, uh, with, I believe it is a five or ten-year forecast of potential work that needs to be done on the, on the bridges, uh, which, which would align with the asset management.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't compare it out, but. Stop hearing this question. Okay, uh, further questions on that? So you can, if you want to increase, uh, that, that line, and, and when we get into the full discussions, you can make case to add more to a reserve to cut the, mitigate.
Uh, just a question to the merit of CEO, when the construction in twenty-four takes place, will all, will that be shut right off the road? Or will you still have line to be able to pass on inside? Some traffic had to be around, I'm just curious, so.
Good question.
Uh, very good question. I, I'm not sure I can answer that right now, but I will, I'll see a director of operation for the group, and you may know this at this stage, I'm not sure you're that far or not.
Through the chair, not positively, but I, you know, you'd see that the deck replacement isn't included on that. So there may be a chance that one lane can remain open, uh, not positive because I haven't seen the engineering there have done, but um, it has the potential, but that would be up to the engineering groups that, who know about that. That's right, thank you.
Good, good question. Yeah, uh, further on the road bridge. Certainly needs some work, that's for sure. All right, uh, business case is, and if I'm not correct on this, correct me, but, uh, did we, we did a pre-budget approval on, on this one, the ten years I would have been a tender back?
And that comes back on February.
Hey, that's fourteen, I knew fourteen somebody other than Valentine's Day. Uh, okay, so business case for this one for the purchase of the five-ton, uh, truck that we already got her.
So on the course, part and including the purchase of a five-ton plow truck, given they proposed, uh, twenty-three capital budget. Um, D five is a twenty-ten international seventy-six hundred tandem axle truck is reaching its full amortization. It is considered to be in very poor condition from both age and mileage components. Yes, but a useful, uh, life plow truck in township's asset management plan is two hundred thousand kilometers or twelve years. T five has accumulated two hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-four kilometers as of January seventeenth uh, and is thirteen-year-old. The tender was developed initially, January sixteenth, uh, tender closed date for February fourteenth. Options or solutions remain status quo by maintaining assigned still flying route, but you buy increased hydro breakdown, replacing vehicle maintenance cost, increase burden on the rest of staff and fleet and potentially a reduction in service. The financial, not financial, uh, benefits, main status quo, this option has no direct impact on the twenty-three budget uh, for capital, but does have an operational budget impacts through increased maintenance cost of T five. Uh, tracking through the township's asset management plan indicate maintenance cost for T five averaged approximately thirty-two thousand dollars a year over the last four years. There's potential production and service resulting to break down. Option two is the desirable choice for both economical and service level perspectives. High-level estimate for replacement T five, the current market is from three hundred fifty thousand four thousand dollars. Um, associated risks with remaining status quo uh, is from both agent high cloud or set perspective, uh, increased repair maintenance and reduced reliability and poor public perception. Initially due to, uh, worldwide component shortages, there's a back lot of trucks on order and greater risk of procurement delays due to, uh, for the choice being made to fit your replacement.
Good, thank you. Um, let's open, I we don't really know until we get the tender back, but you wanna, you can do anything.
Yeah, hold on a minute. I think, yeah, I think that there is some question on whether, um, the, the, the unit is coming in and we, we, we move forward, whether it can be, um, built and delivered in, 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 in twenty twenty-three, maybe very, very, twenty twenty-four. We won't know that, uh, so, uh, the tender comes in and, uh, we get a little bit of an idea of, of, of delivery and who they're using for some contractor from, uh, from, from the file attachments that they, uh, that they, you know, allow the unit to be delivered in, you know, by maybe, uh, by maybe December, but most likely maybe looking at spring of, of, of twenty twenty-four, so there, there, there will be some flexibility, consider uh, putting a portion away, uh, sim- similar to, to what we had just previously discussed with, uh, with the railroad bridge. Um, understanding that, that, the, the timing is a little bit unknown right now.
Good, thanks. Uh, comments, questions on, on T five, anyone?
Yeah, we decided through the merits of the CEO, we're gonna keep T five as a backup in case one where I would try to break down when we get the new one.
Through, uh, through, through the mayor, there is, um, there's discussion with respect to that, at least in, uh, in, uh, uh, in, in, in a temporary, so long as the, um, council's on board with it, and that, that unit is not going to be, uh, uh, very costly. Well, the cost that we want is to keep us very, and then have to invest you know, uh, thousands of dollars in that unit for, uh, on, 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 on rare occasion, but, uh, you know, there are some options that, uh, the, uh, um, operations, public works department are looking into with respect to, you know, uh, options of retaining that at least in the temporary or short term, once, once a unit arrives.
Yeah, I mean, typically we would have this, it would be just declared surplus and we would auction that, uh, whatever, whatever, but if there can be a case made to keep it or put it in use or preventative, then and goes, or we stay at this, with, with one. Um, but you, just, just as a quick one, I seem to recall that there's another four years away, new twenty twenty-five, it looks like they have another product that's, it's, 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 it's end of life as well, based on our normal metrics, is that true, correct? I think it's key things I want to save, but maybe my right.
To, to, to the mayor, uh, it's more complicated this, but I, 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 I would simplify it by even looking at replacing in those units every two years. You know, it's, it's, it's a twelve-year or, or some life expectancy, so. You know, and I think, uh, we, we, we did have some backlog, it's, um, we're, we're, we'll say, you know, four, four or five years ago, and it, it's been a costly, um, um, entered to, to, to replace one of those units, uh, a little bit more of a frequent, uh, uh, time, timeframe, but, you know, we shouldn't, we, we shouldn't just rock it every, every second year, uh, to keep that rotation, uh, well, go on your side.
I've certainly heard, uh, over the time that I've spent at the table, and it's one of the reasons I'm sorry through the, the counselor, or sorry, not counselor, the former counselor Hunter is back, is that he hammered it into my head over four years that we needed to, to continually invest in that zero, zero budgets were never, never going to do it, and I was, I held steadfast to zero budgets, and, uh, this is where we find ourselves when we zero budget, so I'll eat, I'll eat a little crow, um, but that, it's why we make sure that we continue to do that and not to put off the things we're to, we need to actually miss, so that's why I asked you that, yeah, yeah. So on. Okay, further discussion on on, uh, the, the, uh, anyone?
Yeah, just a quick question through, through you, Mr. Mayor, for curiosity, why, what is the, uh, what drives the cost of maintenance on plow trucks? There's thirty-two thousand years, like six hundred dollars a week. What, what is so costly? What's the big things that break the cost someone? I'm not sure the director of operations, public board manager wants to speak to that, or maybe speak to it. So through the, through the mayor, uh, it varies, I mean, uh, it's a moving machine. Uh, it varies from tires, it raises to break the EGR valve in one of the trucks, and that's very costly as well. Uh, easier of all is, uh, environmental, environmental uh, unit for, for truck, for, for, uh, uh, uh. It, it varies, it could, it could be in the, it could be, we, we replace the tire on the trucks. The truck has been tired when we have a loading, but, but that's costly as well, so. Everything breaks, any move, burn rates, oh, it's. So do we commonly spend six hundred bucks a week on, on the plow truck? Uh, so the, uh, since the mayor not typically, um, this, this, this particular unit was, um, a new chassis and, uh, the, the decision at that time was to, uh, actually utilize the, uh, the box and plow system off of the, um, unit that was being replaced, so that certainly is adding, uh, to, to, to a lot of the costs as well, is that you, uh, um, it's the, the common practice, uh, should be that when you're re- replacing here like that, you replace the, 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 the entire system and, um, I, you know, I think, uh, um, lesson learned, it was, it, it was an attempt, uh, you know, with respect to, to costing measures, but, uh, I think in the end, it's, uh, would not, uh, I would certainly not recommend, uh, going that direction. Usually because I believe it has, at its substantial cost to the, the operation of that unit, especially in slums. No, 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 it's, it's, we're talking well, we're, uh, yes.
Yeah, like if you go back through the monthly disbursements, I think, uh, I asked questions on Monday night, uh, or I don't know if I actually asked them or not on Monday, but I certainly sent through email in regard to, uh, the T six costs, because I think the, the two dispersment sheets we looked at for T six totally ten thousand dollars, but at the time, the the seats were, were added together, the EGR valve, A, B, G. I think that, yeah, I think so, um, the tires, there was a lot in maintenance, it certainly adds up, especially on the older ones and new. It's that juggling act, right? Is it worth replacing? This is where where I was mentioning.
Or get that, I was just trying to see what the outcome, it seems like a lot.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
It's a lot. Yeah. If you look back over the life and you look back through all those old disbursement sheets, you'll see that it's it's a lot. Yeah.
Yes, you, Mr. Mayor, uh, T five is used there all year round, using the winter operation, we use a lot in summertime for, on gravel, or in dirt, all this episode, it's, it's the T five is used a lot.
Good, all right, uh, so to, um, both of our, uh, director of operations and our, and our public works director, roads manager, uh, director, thank you for, um, the reports tonight and for the business cases and business summaries, which, which appreciated. Thanks for being able to answer any questions we have, and we look forward to, uh, to furthering that discussion, so. Uh, moving on to, I think we're, item, if everybody was done, sorry, I didn't give everybody an opportunity to finish, was there any further stuff about the, like, uh? Apologies. Um, so then we'll move on to, uh, item C seventeen, which is the draft, uh, environmental services budget. So, so we've been through five items and, and we've gone for a solid, uh, I think we're a solid hour at this point, um, keeping in mind, uh, Mr. Roman, you have seven to discuss here, and we have six after that, and if we do that, we're gonna be here to midnight, so if we can um, I can be sure. Move through the executive summary a tiny bit faster, that would be fine. Fire on.
Through the, this would be the cardinal water pollution control boiler replacements, uh, we utilize four boilers to provide heat to our facility and to our auto thermal pellet aerobic digester system. The heat is important, obviously, to hear facility, but also to digest the stabilizer biochromo. The business need would be the ignition switchboards are obsolete and the two four-hundred boilers. We used a spare old replacement to get our weather number one operational again. So I reached out to multiple companies, um, three providing quote North for plumbing, Black McDonald and Adalair. The lowest spin was fifteen thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollar ninety-three cent for Moore's third fund. I recommend, we recommend that, uh, we, uh, contract Moore's third plumbing to replace one boiler in twenty twenty-three. And looking at a second one in twenty twenty-four, option two would be the contract, uh, company to replace both weathers in twenty twenty-three. Uh, the risks, uh, would be, if we don't do that, would be that we could have obviously failure of our heating system and also related to heating our bio solids to, uh, less to, to treat our files all so that we were having this one thousand call, call, colony for the units, uh, in our selection. Um, the implementation plan would be the schedule, worse performing to replace and commission.
Good, thank you, Mr. Roman, um, let's, this for questions, I, I do have a couple on this one, but I'll wait until very end and see if anybody else fires away first, uh, comments, questions? Uh, so for my, uh, that's a capacity, uh, question, uh, how many boilers do we need operating to do the job properly? Is it in fact all four, or is, or can it be and just reverberate, three is okay, if four is a backup, or that works?
The, um, the engineers that want to install, or they put that fan in, they, they all rotate all four of them. Typically two run and two are off, but they have the capability of all running, depending on the system needs it. Whether it's minus thirty out, and they need to call for all four filters, or in the summer, where you really pretty much don't run in the summer, so it really depends on the environment, so that's why I'm assuming you might look for. Yeah. I, I would say with this evening, all right, so, all four you were talking about, yeah.
Yes. Yeah. And, and actually, there was another question rather different, too. And so these are two identical units, so is it safe to assume that if we did one this year, one next year, we'd be able to salvage some parts off of that for spares for the next year, just to case something that, right?
Yes, the spare, yes, if one is replaced, uh, this year, then spares for that to be maintained for the, the last.
Good question. Um, everyone, good? My only question, um, is in reading and looking at the, are all of the posts the same? Like, I mean, I know the prices are all different, but are they, are they all like? Seems like, you know, somebody did a detailed quote where they're removing asbestos and and building a concrete pillar, a concrete tower and that sort of stuff, so just kind of. You know, one quotes a fair bit, you know, lower than the others, and just making sure that apples are apples.
Yes, they they quoted for a direct replacement, each company tends to have their own brands, so the brand. Is different between each company, as you you see in the quotes, but the boiler itself would meet the demands.
So everything that everything's in that quote, that's my question.
Yes, includes supply and installation.
Good. That's that's everything needs to be done, needs to be done. Move to to the Henry Street Pumping Station.
Yeah, the Hunter Streets Pumping Station, pump panel, it's been in operation since nineteen ninety three, the existing. Pump down is approximately thirty years old and comprised of electrical switches, pump starters, and the running of relays. Um, they operate and start in about two pumps. Panel is aging, there's been temporary fixes to mitigate the panel and replace switches over the years. There is a picture there for your reference. I reached out to Xiong Canada, which is the sole company that supplies light system in Canada, so they're a very reputable company. They quoted for a correct replacement thirty thousand seven hundred eighteen dollars and thirty five cents. And. With that supply, we reached out to I E C B L Rockwell. And a full ten thousand six hundred and five dollars and fifty cents was provided. They came up with a unique solution of possibly is. Replacing the panel without having to do a direct bypass, which will save additional contractors and money that way. Um, the risk is if you don't do anything, that there's a risk of increased failure or in plan, no saved bypasses. And so we're recommending to purchase a new pump and from exile of Canada, we contract I E C B L to install. There is a decent lead time on the panel up to the twenty four weeks, and that could be different now, it changes. So that's.
That's it for my own. Yeah, and I meant to say in the last one, I I certainly, when I was going through these, I appreciate seeing the three. Uh, the three quotes, it certainly provides a lot of background into the funding and exactly what we're getting for for the dollars, and. One of the questions I had in this one was that there was only one, um, which, you know, you've done business cases and included quotes for all of them, so you just answered that question, it's the only. So they go for this one, really. It's really the only place to get it is island there, the.
Xiong is the sole, yes, like or if like, and actually all pumping stations in Cardinal are light duty systems, so. We know that they they operate quite well.
Yeah, Xiong is the great, so, okay, are there questions in regard to this, anyone? Moving on.
We have the to the chair, we have a variable frequency drive, this is. The kernel plants usually have two C fax pumps and a variable frequency we try to operate that pump. This was for our unthicken bile salts from our tanks in the gravity belt thickener. It's a ages of approximately twenty five years old. We've had issues with that variable frequency drive, we've had it serviced and it's been rebuilt a number of years ago. Uh, due to ongoing operational issues with that, we are recommending replacing it. Um, one told provided for eighty nine eighty nine sixty. To supply and install a new V F D. In that. And the the risk of not doing it is we do have one redundancy, however, it's it's always good to have two operational at all time. It gets operated three to five times a week, depending on how much solace we're pumping off our basis.
Okay, uh, good, thank you again, uh, questions? Yeah, for it's very straightforward for these. You can continue.
We have.
I just want to know that Deputy or Deputy Mayor Dilabod is moving away from the table for this discussion.
Through the chair, we have our Spencerville Pump Station number one transfer switch. Uh, Spencerville Sanitary Pump Station number one was commissioned in nineteen eighty nine, the pumping station utilizes a generator and a transfer switch. In the event we have power outage. The transfer switch will transfer power from off the grid, which has no power to a generator, so if that transfer switch fails. We may not be able to switch onto generator supply, which could be to increase density of bypasses into. Foundation River or into people's homes. Um, so we revise from Gal Power, which is our service provider for generators. Um, that the transfer switch is obsolete, there's no spare parts for it, and we have serviced it over the years, so. Uh, we feel it's a kind of a thing that we replace that transfer switch now before we have any. Failure, and I'm recommending that so we contract Gal Power to supply and install that panel which are. Estimated cost is seven thousand six hundred eighty six dollars and the time is about two to four weeks. And.
Good, in my mind, if I can just for background again, did did we budget for the switch last year and then do a valve instead of the switch?
No, we looked at doing the inflight flare box.
Okay, it was the valve, okay. And, okay, good, yeah, that was just my my only question, so. Uh, questions for anyone? For this? Also, hello. Very much, okay, you can keep, you can keep going. Please, now, just note that the Deputy Mayor has is. Join this.
Uh, we we have a lot of current water plants, a probable and natural baby analyzer replacement, so we have been proactively replacing obsolete equipment over the last three years, including. Three golden Anderson pump directors and then the three twenty eight. Um, they've been in service for product in eighteen years and the parts and serviceability are limited. We are recommending to continue the process of operating each equivalent is to. Uh, contracts capital controls to. Install two new analyzers and purchase them for a total price of fifteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Obviously, not doing it when there's an increased risk that aging equipment could fail, we need to. Um, operational or compliance issues.
Thank you. Uh, questions, anyone? Yeah, no. So, okay, so from a lifecycle thing, I know it was nineteen, and I was surprised it was nineteen years old, is like, what's the? Like, is there a, or we passed it?
Uh, when I would say we're we're past it, based on the fact that if they failed and parts are not available, I'd say we're 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 getting, you know, they lived a long life, so.
Nineteen years, a long time.
Yes, so I think they were all upgraded kind of that post lock.
Yeah, okay, that's that's the only note that I had, so further discussion on on this item, no? Fifteen years. The business case for the industrial park water.
Industrial Park Water System, it receives also available water from the town of Prescott, it's. Is commissioned in nineteen eighty nine, there's twenty seven residential homes on it and thirteen commercial. Properties, main size, it's ranging from one hundred and fifty millimeters, which is finished up to four hundred and fifty millimeters, which is our eighteen inch line. In the event of a water emergency, like a water main break. We do have limited supplies to repair, we do have one eighteen inch repair clamp in stock, which would which would repair like a circumferential, like a circular inside the brake. Where you can clamp it and and be done with it, so however, we do not have supplies. Related to a break that may require a section of pipe to be cut out. And so when we looked at our risk assessment and looked at potential risks, this one was identified, so I looked into. Uh, parts and the eighteen inch high max couplings are special or anything over sixteen inch becomes a special order item, which has to be. Uh, made to order, that's a twelve to eighteen week lead time for two of those is sixty one forty. And a length of eighteen inch PVC water main pipe, which. Is minimum order is one twenty for the ninth is. Four thousand three hundred fifty cent, uh, three hundred four thousand three hundred fifty dollars, so. Um, there's really a variety of options, and we are recommending to purchase the two high max couples and length of pipe. Um, failure to do this, obviously, um, would result in a prolonged period where the water system could be down. Um, because it's a. It's not a loop system, so if you have a failure anywhere along that line, you're definitely going to have service disruptions, if not a complete shutdown, obviously, we got lots of large industry there that rely on. Water, so I thought this would be prudent to put into the consider. That's kind of.
Yeah, good, yeah, thank you. Comments, questions, anyone? Thoughts on, yeah.
Uh, through the merit of the sale, maybe Dave can recall when those lines were swapped, how many years ago was that, do you remember? And further to that question, when there was a, was it? Being the line out enough for the last song? I know it was there when they did it, but I can't remember what year we did it.
I'm believing it was the nineteen nineties. I really, I could, I don't know the year, I know we had a retired operator was involved in that. Yeah, we were one of them, you know, with the other one, like.
Yeah. I believe it was before the. Number ninety seven.
I can't remember. Would it would it would have been in early two thousands? They know about breaking that system until.
Oh, yeah, but I remember though. That they would, like, it really cleaned the line out, like. They look like three big sponge fails of hay. And when they can, you can pick them up by your hand, if you couldn't pick them up, we need the back horse to pick them up, they clean just so well. So don't know if that preserved the line until now, or.
Through through the mayor, part part of that is especially where you have things where it's like low water flow. Uh, what what happened is the sediment can build up particles, not swapping is is basically to remove it and and keep it fresh. I think with the, we went to the system now, within the the expansions that are taking place at industrial park, the. The flow is certainly on a daily basis substantially more than it was. Uh, because we we would actually. It's not that core residual at the at the far end, which which were we're not having those same issues as we as we once did. Uh, certainly anticipating that. All of all of us here will be long retired before there is a, it is one of those water main breaks, but given the. Especially the expansion within that industrial park, uh, to have those to have those supplies on hand. In 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 that.
No, but we, um, duly chair, we're not having an issue right now, though.
No, this is a.
Because of the.
Successive process.
Because of the back order and I like to.
Back where and there is an on one system, but I, as I was saying here, it's not something you rely on to get parts, it's the last minutes. Kind of our last kind of thing to do.
Right. I can appreciate that, what, but would we, so like couplings are twelve to eighteen weeks? What would you do if you didn't have a coupling and you needed a coupling?
We would have to activate the on worn system, which is really any municipality that joins it in the province of Ontario, you can initiate it, and we hope that another municipality has those parts. That they can lend to you and then we pay them back, but it's not a system you rely on, it's not, I'm sorry, but certainly. You know.
Better to have one lender, that's what you go for. Yeah. Okay. And so, and this is a question that that I added in. To to the C A O, and there's, if if pricing matters to folks at the table. Uh, option two doesn't include H S T, option one does, the difference between the two should only be seven hundred and thirty five dollars, right?
Your your my quality, though.
That's okay, that's fine.
I did have the numbers, it was eleven thousand eight hundred fifty three. Uh, dollars and seventy cents and six thousand nine hundred thirty dollars and twenty cents. Yes, because my pricing, the option two and three don't include the H S T.
Yeah.
Unlike option.
Thanks, thanks for that, I was just, I was going through it on my fourth or fifth week last night, and I was like. That's not quite right, it's only seven thirty five, so, um, and then I figured out that it was something, it was just the H S T. Just so that everyone up here is. Is aware when you're doing your same thing that I likely did was scribbling and doing all that stuff, so I think that is just. Good. Any questions?
Uh, it's not really a big deal, but you know, a super. It more comes down to how often we're replacing these things, because, you know, I I hate to say that we we, you know, we 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 buy these two, uh, two couplings. Use them, and also we have to wait for another next budget before we're replacing, and I hope we don't get to that, and we hope we do something better before that, so. You know, I know we talked, I thought offline a bit about the spares, but it's not spares, I don't know why we buy it this week, but. You know, is two is two really the rule, the number is if people. Through the mayor, I would, I I would suggest that we start with two. I I don't think it's it is a bad thing to look at. With respect to have. Uh, and and additional spare.
We don't, we don't have any.
Just the repair plant, which should only be good for like the circular.
Awesome. And so anything further, anyone? Yeah, so, uh, so where are we, we on seven?
Uh, the Spencer Rule for the Chair, Spencer Rule.
Yeah.
The Spencer Rule was commissioned in nineteen eighty nine, the living building, the more devices they flow here to monitor influential entry, that we need to do itself. And initiates the activation of. Uh, the pump will go to the aluminum salted. Annually, uh, through that system and systems in Cardinal, we have capital controls come in and does an annual verification calibration. Of process equipment. Uh, this particular flow meter, however, could not pass the past year's, uh, uh. Verification due to like this internal error, the flow meter is functional, working, but the unit that he uses to verify the. Um, the flow meter picked up several errors that so he couldn't pass it, so because of that, he is re, they are recommending replacing the flow meter. Um, right now, this, we're proposing just to purchase the flow meter this year as there is. Uh, we're looking at different installation options, which may involve. Uh, creating force name or setting up a temporary bypass or even installing a valve live. Uh, because there's no valve right outside the Alamo building, and it's a fully charged line sewer line from. Uh, Station One Hollywood. So right now, we're at the stage of, uh, we're going to plan the installation from then and plan it out for twenty twenty four. Um, the risk analysis is. Uh, because now we've identified a problem, we need to develop corrective actions, so one of them being is to purchase an inflow meter. Develop that installation and then implement it. Um, capital controls quoted four thousand six hundred and twenty to supply and correct.
Great, thank you. Uh, questions, anyone? Uh, I think we have some sort of sense around this to know, right, I take through the banners to the chair, that we have a some sort of sense around this, so that if it does fail, we know about it, as opposed to being surprised.
They, we we actually came through the chair, we obtained readings three times a week, so. We ended registering, so we would see very very quickly if it wasn't. Just be, even though it doesn't necessarily pass an annual verification, doesn't necessarily mean it's not working, it's just a part of our due diligence is to. You know, certify every year that our business working is failed apps.
Yeah, and the only other question I had is, you know, so if we had the pump, and all of a sudden something did, it was very. It was bump anyways, and something did go wrong, uh, and obviously put us in much better position than emergency repair if we had to. So.
I don't think it would be emergency, I think purchasing and developing a solid plan would be probably the third steps, I think this doesn't necessarily reach the emergency level, and I think. Ministry would see that because there's a fair bit of planning involved in.
Yeah. Uh, fine, fine, would be anyone? No, no. Okay, um, I have a question, it's not in regards to any of the seven here. Um, but it does go back to the splitter box, though. So splitter box was important last year, did we, did we replace it?
No, the. Realigning, so we are, we are, it was a, it's a real mining tier, it's still in play, and it's just not going to be in this year's budget. Um, it wasn't to replace, it was to do a a realigning in the interior.
Yes. Okay, and and so. So we're not seeing it this year, we saw it last year, we used the money from what we budgeted last year to replace a valve. We're going to see the splitter box realign next year.
It's, we're gonna, I I can't a hundred percent guarantee a year, because we have to develop this year, we just purchased the valve, so the valve is going to be installed in the spring. And so it's kind of easy to get that job done. And so it's kind of easy to get that job done first to make sure that's a good, just what, uh, before I plan the next, uh, next projects.
Yeah, that's, that just helps me understand. Stand that, so let's.
Go through a recentering process for that, so that, for that lining.
Yeah, okay, uh, does anyone have any questions for, uh, Mr. Ramon before, or we move on to recreation? No one, no, so again, I just want to say, you know, thank you, good business cases, very, uh, good reports, nice to see the, um, you know, the, uh, the quotes and the options, well, well done, it's good, makes this hard, well, it, it's very helpful, yeah. Uh, and so, Mr. Spencer, I believe you are on the hot.
Very much.
All right.
Um, business case number one for the first recreation facilities of the, of the. Um, the executive summary just indicating that as a summer of twenty twenty, the, uh, municipality purchased and sold two new sets of docks, one after the actual launch itself. And then one in front of the, uh, which, um, over the last year and a half, uh, they've realized, uh, quite a bit. Um, the only old dock that we had still in, in the working condition at the start of last summer, was situated right in front of the pavilions. Um, and, uh, because of the, the age of that dock and the condition of it, we removed it in, uh, in late August, uh, as it was becoming more of a, a danger and a hazard than it was, uh, for the actual accessibility or folks for. Um, the business stage just knocking, just indicating that, uh, we are looking to replace it with an eight by twenty foot, uh, dock system, which is a demo to the ones that we had purchased and sold in twenty twenty. Um, the options of not replacing it would be the, that most wouldn't be able to pull up there, or kids wouldn't be able to fish off of, off of that dock. Um, which they do, um. We contacted, I, I contacted the, the fabrication, which are the ones that, uh, did the work on the original docks in twenty twenty and, uh, he's, uh, giving me, uh, a price for, um, the eight by twenty dock. Um, there, we're looking at a couple of options as far as, you know, we would build a, a, um, a step system going down to it, or we would put a ramp. If we do have a ramp, then it would have a railing on one side. Um, I'm not sure if everyone is familiar with the area, but it is quite a, a slope incline there. So, um, we are definitely looking at a couple of different options, uh, and we love that, we want that, well, finalized, once he comes out, then, uh, has another one happen. So, but the only all cost would, would not exceed fifteen thousand dollars. I already have a place on the actual dock itself, it's just whether or not we're gonna put a stepping system in or another smaller, put a rail. Is, is the options that we're not sure yet.
Awesome, true, um, we could have that in place for May first. They could have a building. Thanks. Okay, thank you for, for that, so question, that means audience from committee, so. Answers now?
Uh, through the chair to the back director, uh, you say you got a quote from the. Leveque, did you get quotes from other people?
Through the chair, no, I just, um, went with Leveque, uh, back in twenty twenty, we had, um, an issue getting quotes from, um, a couple of local people and Leveque stepped up and, uh, worked, uh, and, uh, we thought that the, the pricing was payable. Um, and he has done a lot of, um, work for the settlement conservation authority, which we had partnered with a petition dock that was, uh, purchased and sold the year before. So we felt comfortable that the pricing that we had from Leveque was, um, a good price, and so I have not got, uh, an additional price for this one, because this way, having the same company do the work, then the system can be a down code. And then with, uh, the same ones. Pretty natural testing.
Excellent. Yeah.
Counselor? Uh, I think along that same day, um, uh, what I was wondering about was, uh, you know, it was comparatively to the price we got for the last time we bought these, it sounds like we didn't go to another, another, some, another supplier, because it was similar, because the price is probably very close to that, uh, to the like for like, not the complicated stair climb, but I think, so that's the question, I guess. So, so justification as to why, uh, we didn't get the price, but I think, I think if I, there wasn't a reply from anyone else last.
I know, right?
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't, we didn't go, it's no reply. Yeah, and like I said, I'm confident that we simply, we had it before, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we tried a couple of reasons up, uh, in, one again, on way in, I believe that with the blockwork. Um, we had one individual on a block, rock, bring it down and then he, uh, he started not to get on.
Further, uh, yeah, I'd just like to, uh, like to expand on that, I just wonder if we couldn't go outside, at least to our own local, try, try vacation companies of, uh, molders just up the road here to see the, and at least give us a quotation. Feel much better. We try to keep it in our, our township, um, certainly. He can do it or come into that ballpark, I think, uh, you can do it, it's nice. That's my suggestion, I would like another quote. From, uh, molders.
Anything? No. Okay. Um. I think my only question, I think you sort of answered it is, is I had, did, did include the ramp, but, because the ramp is, is substantial.
More like a group of ramp or a stepping.
Or some form of a step.
Yeah.
And it'll.
At that price.
Yeah, okay, I think a ramp would be better, just.
Uh, the only, uh, through the chair, to, to, the only problem is, is the incline.
Yeah, the incline gets bad.
It is a little bit steeper than the one that's over, um, in front of the canyon.
But we also have to look for dismembered people to use it. Step.
Uh, that's one, uh, we have, we have, the, especially with the op is accessible for the handicap, but this one would not be accessible for me.
Yeah. That's what the, the assessment law is for.
That is correct, yeah. But, but I just.
Sure.
With, with, with respect to the, uh, procurement policy, typically items under twenty thousand is usually a single, what?
Single.
A single quote, typically from twenty to fifty thousand, it requires the three, uh, written quotes. So just, just so you were like, sometimes you, you, you don't know what's wanted, what, what, when the value's down, that's.
I think the W M air was beginning to point that it was yesterday that it wasn't a local, whenever, when he wanted the local service and good at that side.
Uh, uh, under, uh, understanding what this one combined with some of that, you know, some, some of that clarity, you know, with, with respect to, uh, single.
Yeah, I think that's fair, uh, is there further discussion on the dock? You'll leave it everything to stand good for now, yeah. And it, it does replace the old ones.
That is correct.
Yeah, yeah, we, we did well to get, you did well to get a couple of years out of the old ones, did you want further?
Well, I'm new at this game, so I'm not sure I'm allowed to talk about the other docks at the far end, or, or is that a month later?
The other docks are, well, we're talking about the dock that's on the business case for the one that's, that's here, but if you've got something you want to add to it.
Well, I just want to know if we're gonna go ahead with, through the railing or something for seniors getting out of the boats. I gotta hold this.
I think that's probably a discussion for, that was probably a discussion for something different.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
This, uh, uh, yeah, probably, probably not on, on, on the capital end of it, but that was certainly one of the, uh, some of the feedback that they received and, um.
Good, I mean.
Uh, yeah, the manager of our tracks and facility myself got, uh, uh, touch base on that.
No, I just take right.
I guess.
I don't want to take up the, thank you.
You know, it's good, it's good, and certainly look to staff to remedy some of those issues that, that we've identified for sure, for sure, for sure. Um, so business case number two, which is the dock perk and the parking lot upgrades for the ingredient center.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, so, um, back in the summer of twenty twenty two, the council, they asked us to repair, um, a cost, um, for constructing a, a dog park, um, in the village of Cardinal. Um, after some, um, consultation with the C A O and, uh, input works manager, we can look at the second, uh, ball landing area, which is, we use, uh, ingredient. Um, in September of, um, twenty twenty two, um, the recommendation, uh, information item, I should say, that was, uh, submitted to the council today, which, uh, talked about selling a dog park. There will be two separate dog parks, one for smaller dogs, one for larger dogs. Uh, we also added that we would be looking to, uh, add some additional parking at that time, also utilizing that area, uh, the additional parking would be for the ingredient area, which has been an ongoing issue over the years. Um, so there are a total of, uh, six pictures that were presented to council back in September, uh, with a, an overlay of the cost, um, indicating the measurements of the, of the parks and also indicating the, the area of the, uh, proposed additional parking.
Good, thank you. Um, discussion. Quite, um, I, uh, I will. The, they certainly, um, you know, was, uh, especially under the last council, I don't know that there was a ton of support. Uh, I certainly support the offer, but, um, there was, there wasn't a ton of support for a dog park, but there certainly was, uh, a fair amount of support for, uh, and an understanding of need for, for some form of parking, parking upgrades for, for the ingredient center, and as much as I like a dog park, um, it seems that, that, uh, better parking circumstances are needed, uh, in that area. So I think a big portion of this quote is, uh, is, is covering that, am I correct?
And, yes, she's exactly right here.
Yeah, and that, that gets us the picture sales, right?
Um, yes.
And that's paved?
That is, but, yeah.
And it increased.
Some of the, uh, if I made, uh, some of the ordinary work would be, um, completed by our own, um, homeworks. You know.
Yeah, I think always the concern there is that if we pave that area, we lose, we definitely lose the, we definitely lose the, the, the second baseball field, the second baseball field's gone.
Second baseball field hasn't been operated as a ball field for the last seven years.
It's got a long time. Yeah, it's always the concern when, when discussing with the public is that nobody wants to lose that, you know, that asset, but it really isn't, really isn't being utilized, even the first one's not, um, utilized, but once it's gone and it's parking lot, it's gone and it's parking lot, so. Um, having the dog parks there really doesn't impact the ability to go back to a ball field, but once you pave it into a parking lot, it's not going back to a ball field. So if we make that decision, I think it's worthwhile to, to make sure that we make that consideration, and having said that with snowbanks and, and the lack of parking, uh, if you go to a Saturday night hockey game or a Saturday afternoon hockey game there, and now you're parking at the mall and, and walking to the ingredient center, so we recognize that there is a, is a strong need for some more, for some more parking there, so, uh, is there a further discussion, does anybody wanna, do you wanna? You wanna get in, I sense that you're interested.
No, 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 you know, uh, feel in this room.
Yeah.
The parking, absolutely. And that's as far as I can.
Two chances to take a shot at me.
No. Uh, Mr. Mayor, five block upgrades of like sixty, but.
Do you? I can't, you're staying silent on this one.
At this point in the question, uh, on the carpet area you have here, through you do a rotation, uh, how many cars is that going to park, it doesn't really look like it's uh, big of an area. Um, through the chair to, um, Mr. Hunter.
It's weird, eh?
Yeah. Um, I, I believe, um, our public works manager and myself figured in the, it would, uh, between twenty six to thirty perfect spots. What it would also do is currently right now, when you are going, uh, north on Gil Street, there is the gravel area where our, our cars are asked to park on a diagonal, that area will be paved as well, so there, um, and, yes, and it'll be lined. So that, that way, because right now, sometimes keep the park in there from the back and they don't actually go in on the angle.
I do.
So it will be painted and it will be painted that way with, uh, signs, so that it'll be an additional parking spot. Um, would be twenty six to thirty on the inside portion.
And I think, you know, which leads to the question of, uh, for me of snow removal and in that, and you know, like, because if you, you keep that, the, you've got the roadway for plowing, and then you've got that, you know, that diagonal, that long diagonal parking area, which then leads to two entrance ways into another parking area, it just seems like it might be a nightmare for snow removal, that's all, that's my only. So sure that in the plans, you guys will consider all that, but it just, in my mind, it just looks like a big nightmare as far as snow removal, but.
So on the paving on Gil Street, there will be barriers that will, the barrier will be between, so the, the cars will park on the diagonals and be both, but up to the barrier, then the parking lot will be on center side of that. So, okay, our, our public works department will go in either way to the parking lot area and, and we'll be able to push that snow off on the grass area.
Okay, so then there's no barrier onto the grass area, so you can just push it back as far as you want to push it back?
That is correct.
Okay, cool. Okay, all right. All right, I, I recognize that there's, I certainly do recognize that there's, there's, there's definitely a a, a parking, and I'm not a parking lot guy, but there's certainly a, a, a parking lot. I'll agree, there's certainly a parking lot issue there, for sure. I, I think there's a dog park need too, but, uh, I think I'm gonna lose that, I think I'm gonna lose that battle, so, okay, um, uh, thank you for that, um, so if we did, so, so looking at that number, that, that sixty three number, so, would we get a more, like, that would have to work to tenders, you would, you would get a detailed design, like there'd be a, you know, something more than this that we would see at some point, or is this what we would see? Um, is it six?
I believe, um, maybe the public works manager could, uh, back, you know, this one, but I believe a lot of the initial work was, is going to be done by our, our in-house team, it would just be the paving that would be done by a third party contractor. And depending on when the project was done, it's something that may be able to tie into other projects that municipality has, uh, this spring or the summer as well.
Yeah, no, that would be best, definitely, we can tie it in when they're paving highway two and all, all the machines were already there, it would make the most sense and you'd probably get the best practice too, so. Okay, cool. Uh, I'm just gonna be sticking it out as a, so, um, business case number three, Cabo Long.
Yes, business case number three, um, so the municipality, our state detractors have started to age, uh, Scott has done a great job of maintaining them, um, in shape that they are in, however, I believe it's in our best interest that we start looking at the places somewhere. Um, we currently have three moors that are stationed in Cardinal, uh, and one in Spencerville. Uh, this would replace the Cabo Long model, uh, that was purchased in two thousand and two, uh, which as far as exceeded its hours of operations. Um, the new, uh, Cabo Long would be a sixty, sixty inch deck. Um, the benefits obviously would be reduction of, uh, repair cost. Um, we did replace, we did purchase a new one last summer, uh, not replaced the nineteen ninety seven Cabo Long model that we had. Uh, and again, the, the deck on that was, was starting to go, um, and that is the issue with this two thousand and two model as well. Um, so they do get quite a bit of use during the summer in our parks department. Um, and, um, we have obtained three votes and the price there, uh, that is listed in thirty two, six, forty is, um, the lowest quote, I won't, I'm not indicating the, the three companies that we, uh, that I quoted them on, because these prices were about six weeks old, and they could change, um, within the next six weeks. We did have that happen last year, uh, we had budgeted fifty thousand, I believe, for the model that we'll be seeing last year and it ended up costing thirty three thousand, that's the price one, uh, over the course of the eight weeks. Uh over the course of the eight weeks that we had the uh. So that's why I'm not indicating the company on this, it's got a parents.
That's and that's that's.
We would have them all ready for the spring of twenty-one.
Right, so that that I mean, I've got a couple of questions, but that would, I'll just take that one out right away is, so they're available from any of the three that.
That is correct.
Is. Yes, and my only other question, I think I'm gonna take it, uh. Uh is, did we only look at Kubota's or did we look at any other manufacturers as well?
Um we only looked at, we only looked at Kubota, that's what we had in our fleet uh over the the last twenty years. And um we have tried a couple of models, we have. Uh back three years ago, um and it just wasn't as durable as it.
Okay, so opening it up.
Yes, my question, you ask my question, why how come? You know, with their Kubota's, but that's the way it is, that's the way it is, which one is gonna be replacing, you have three, three and one expensive. Which new ones going?
So that's the two thousand and two model, and that's that one is situated in.
Okay, so that new one, this new one will be going to Cardinal again?
That's correct.
And same with the other one last year.
That is correct.
Thank you. Um and I'll I'll probably steal counselor. Smales question with the uh with the O two, it would just the same as what we probably did with the ninety-seven, which it would go to the to the auction and it would sell.
Yes, so what uh um. What we did with with last year, we cut last year, the deck is no good, but we use it everywhere in Sudsville for for dragging the ball then. So we were still utilizing it, but not cut. The deck has been taken off and it's just used for for dragging the ball then.
The tractor's still still functional, but. Hmm, interesting, okay.
This one would go off for auction, one that will replace.
This one would?
Yes.
Okay, so there's not not enough value in it for another purpose. Uh does anyone have any comments, questions? Built this one? Okay. Hearing none, let's move on to the business case for the new recreation.
Yes, uh thank you, so um the executive summary just shows that currently that currently uh the. My fleet of trucks for the tax and rec department are four trucks. Two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and thirteen, two two thousand and eleven models. Um we'll see the two thousand and thirteen and the model two thousand and eleven model. Those trucks were formerly from the Ford Johnstown, so when they recorded, uh with purchase a new vehicle, we would get. After the four years, we would get their handy down basically. Um so um the one that we're looking to replace is the two thousand thirteen model, which currently is utilized on the lead hand. Um and it's starting to certainly show its its age and starting, we uh lost the uh. These kit boards on it, uh because of rust and there's a lot of uh. Rust under the wheel wells and what have you. We've worked at, excuse me. We've worked at two uh twenty twenty-two models to replace. Um and the the reason that I I I know and I'm obtaining a price on a twenty twenty-two model is. Those vehicles are basically just come onto the lot in the last two or three months, where typically a new vehicle, a twenty twenty-three will come on in September. Because of these backlog uh in the uh auto industry. Uh some of these vehicles have just come onto the lots in the last two, three and four months. Um so there, yes, it is a twenty twenty-two model, but. Um it's not something that has set up a lot for the course of the whole calendar year. There are um options on a variety of different models, if we were interested in purchasing. Uh outright, or if we were looking at lease, there are certain lease options at an attractive. Uh rate uh depending on the law. So the idea would be to purchase one and have it put into our fleet in June of this year. After obtaining three quality quotes from various dealers.
Is that, is that a thing? Just trying to, yeah, but I want, yeah, okay, so questions, comments on. So, so, yeah. Uh I'm assuming based on this, we have the same sort of model where we expect these to last ten years before we replace them, is that same kind of math?
Chair to the council board, um well, based on the ones that we have, they typically are lasting. Our our vehicles, like parts and rec department, like the current one that I have right now is is four years old. And only has seventy-five thousand, it's almost eighty thousand. So it's it's basically my vehicle and the lead hand vehicle that utilizes most kilometers over the course of the year. The other two trucks, we have one stationed at each arena. Um they obviously get utilized a little bit more during the summer months. Um but the ploners on those don't get racked up nearly as much as as mine or the new hand was on the road that I have at the same time.
Thank you, I was just noticing that we have three really old over the four, so I just suspect there's, you know, another another one of these covered sometimes as well, so.
Uh just to ensure the mayor to Mike. This new truck that you're getting is a. Quad cab four by four. Is it going to yield the as a record?
Yes.
Can you explain to me how much time you use the? That seat and stuff?
Yeah, through the chair to uh. Um councillor Stanley, we utilize it quite a bit for uh moving uh equipment. And moving canton supplies. Um we purchased a lot of our canton supplies at various outlets. As opposed to having companies bring the product in, and a lot of that stuff is put in the back of that vehicle during that.
Anyone else, questions? I I I do have a couple, and I, you know, and and you sort of stole a little bit of my thunder, I I think this is, you know, there's four. Four-wheel drive pickup trucks in our recreation department, I I. See this as the perfect opportunity if if we are, I mean, it's a. The perfect opportunity to, you know, move forward into, you know, whether it's a hybrid, whether it's it's something that's that's electric, it's something. It's different, especially when, you know, you talk about the mileage that gets. Put on them, the the sort of driving, that sort of thing, we're gonna recognize. At some point in in our operation side of this, we're gonna hear about how much gas cost us this year and how much more gas. Uh cost us to run our fleet of everything. I just question. You know, what you said, do we need a four by four? Um um I understand that that, you know, we pick up things, we move a lot of things around, we have. Do we need four four trucks to do that, or is there a way that we can we can manipulate that so that it's not for four by four? Gas monster trucks, so I know the new ones are are far more efficient. Um but I'm I'm just curious if there's, you know, some thought that we can put into. You know, even if it's a little bit more cost, um or, you know, I I just was playing around for a Maverick truck, you know, like uh it's a Ford truck, it's a. A tiny bit smaller than these, but it's, you know, it's a hybrid and it's, it comes in under fifty thousand and. Certainly gets better than double the fuel mileage, so just wondering if there might be a few more. Considerations given to exactly what we're replacing and. You know, why we're replacing, if we're replacing the two thousand and eleven, you know, maybe there's a better option that we can replace it with, just. Just food for thought, the other one is um. Uh I have no issue with the the twenty twenty-three or the twenty twenty-two portion of of that, but that doesn't necessarily consider in all. Manufacturers and all dealers, and you know, I know with General Motors, General Motors has. Tons of twenty-twos, we passed them all when we went to Toronto on the train. A few uh few weeks ago, there's lots of them in all, every parking lot in Oshwa is full of. Uh that's General Motors is full of of twenty twenty-two trucks waiting for chips. Um but you know, we, there are Dodge dealerships, there are other dealerships that already have twenty twenty-three models in stock and on their lots and. By only including a twenty twenty-two, it excludes people from possibly. Um you know, bidding in on tenders and stuff like that, so I I would appreciate seeing twenty-two. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, so that you could get an option on of this year current model. Uh or truck as well, not just re, you know, cause if if you're only able to bid. For a twenty twenty-two, it might exclude somebody who only has twenty twenty-threes on the lot, so.
Yeah, the idea wasn't just, it wasn't sole person with with just GM, the idea was to speak to Ford and and Dodge as well.
Yeah, perfect, I just don't wanna exclude, again, we have. Yeah, and 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 like for me, and I know we've talked about this before, I know I was told, no, we need trucks, but I I just, I question. You know, I do question, you know, the need for four of them. Um I get that we have a fleet of four of them, but you know, I just some creative thinking and. And you know, we do have, you know, climate change is definitely a thing on a lot of people's minds. Um you know, and I know we're going to hear gas, I know we're gonna hear gas in the operation side of our of our budget, I know we're gonna look at some. You know, at some point, we have to look at. At um you know, some form of electrifying, if it's not this year, it's, you know, and then not next year, it'll be within this fourteen years, so it's. I think it's worthwhile to be a leader, not, you know, not her, right, so. To to the chair, so I mean, that's that's true, and 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 I can appreciate that, I just. You know, you keep hearing all these horror stories about, you know, a battery dying, then you're not gonna get your ten years out of a car if you have that, because. You know, it's cheaper to throw it out there just for a battery, it's it's kind of, you know, what the internet said. If you wanna be cautious about doing that, I would be. Yeah, I just, I would like to see. Uh is there further discussion on the business case need for a? At this point, no. Okay, alright, so who needs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, well, I can say that if we have the full gears in today, it'd be good.
It was eighty-two, I'd jump in.
Yeah, so um. The uh councilman and and commissioner are aware that we do operate two of those pools, uh on a Johnstown one garden. Um typically, we run uh the the last, the third meeting June and two months of July and August. Um we are the basically the only two red door pools in the eastern region that are not heated at this time. Um the business, same basically having control of water temperatures would allow us to open the pools earlier in June and be able to. Our in-house training that we have started to do over the last year, year and a half. Um also, it would be a a better uh in warmer work environment for our our lifeguards. Um I I know some of the councillors have had children or grandchildren that are in the pools. Early on in in the in the season, and the temperatures are extremely cold sometimes. Other times, if it's nice out, then it's warmed up, but the last two to three years, uh we're starting in in the sixties. Um sometimes in the in the high fifties, um before we can start warming things up. Um we would be looking to install single unit commercial grade gas heaters, gas heaters for both. Facilities. Um the financial increase, the pool is even in. And obviously, it would just naturally. The registration because of the warm weather, other warm water streams. Risk analysis is continue on and hope for warmer weather. Um the recommendations are put uh. A tender up for the installation of commercial grade heaters. Um one thing I didn't put in this plan, um and I we spoke the other day, the treasurer and the CIO. Just um as far as funding, where the funding for this can go and come from. The Cardinal one could be funded from the hydro account. The one at the Johnstown communities of the Johnstown pool, then potentially have to be done just through the back days. It's an option.
I think it's that. Uh questions, concerns, comments on who needs?
I don't see a price like here. I thought I saw somewhere.
The treasurer's original worth of a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, it was, I thought it's a hundred, but not in this, that's right, we don't have it down here.
You wanted this, no, just. That is correct, you didn't, you didn't miss it, was it, it was a hundred thousand, a thousand each.
Right, okay, but it's not, okay, I knew, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, but we don't know, so.
Or do you have, is that including like running the gas line?
That is correct, yes.
Fifty thousand, yeah. And truthfully, the granddaughters and 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 grandsons, they can hack it a lot more old than the grandfathers, believe me. I lived in one last year because of that, so. I want that, so yeah, um I haven't got a mission, I just thought with some uh uh that. Hundred thousand, so that's good, thank you.
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good. You look like you wanted to speak.
Through the chair to the rector after dropping the word grandchildren in negotiations is a little bit dirty.
Nothing, that's all, just uh I'm assuming, I don't know, I was ridiculed prior about when it's pretty cool versus two pool conversation, the. Uh that one of these would actually service both the pools at Johnstown, I was assuming, or is it uh? Let's serve Cardinal. Sorry, it would service both pools, Cardinal, what the one?
Uh no, uh through the mayor to uh councillor board, it would only. The the main pool, the largest.
Babies get to freeze.
The baby pool warms up real quick, really. Oh, it's not really the issue, sometimes they look up into that one, but just get warmed up.
Um I I still have several, but.
Can you, no? Uh just, John, you have a advocate here. Looking at your capital. Budget, which uh repair you got on the Cardinal pool, but your budget in first. This year, a hundred thousand dollars for two heaters. What's the operating cost going to be on those heaters too per week?
Did you?
Uh through the chair, um yeah, we. Um preliminary costs of the. And. And it's upwards of two thousand dollars over the course of summer. Yeah, it would be ten, ten weeks.
It's, it was definitely mine, was the, you know, the it 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 would feel more comfortable, I think, seeing. You know, a little bit more information, um that, you know, the running of the gas line, the, you know, like all of that broken down into what the. You know, how much the heater costs, like all of the, all of this, this, I'd feel more comfortable with with knowing what I was. Getting getting into plus, you know, a a plan for. Seeing that coming forward, like the uh the cost from Kentville and the class of Prescott, I, you know, I feel more. In that discussion, I feel like I had more information at my disposal, I think if I was making that uh. That decision, it'd certainly make it a lot uh easier to suit for me. I hadn't thought of the Cardinal hydro fund though, uh for for partially. For partial funding for that, so that's that's good. It's probably on this, is it on, is not on issue too. That's that's an okay, that would be no be to the CIO, that would be no be so responding, are we gonna get into that? We're gonna get into that uh discussion. We have to get into that discussion, so.
Use it to do, they certainly 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 is, certainly is an option, it 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 has been uh. Puts up and use there for some of the uh for some of the pool upgrades and from the past.
And so for the new members uh of committee and of council. Can you give a very brief? Background on exactly what the Cardinal Hydro Fund is and what its intended purposes are, sorry, to begin on this. Background on exactly what the card- cardinal hydro fund is and what its intended purposes are. Sorry, putting you on the spot, but I know he completes this one, so.
Well, the, uh, the the cardinal hydro, uh, fund is back, uh, uh. Well, to the old village, uh, village of Cardinal, but they they basically that fund is set up to, uh, receive sort of dividends, uh. From, uh, Reno, St. Lawrence Utility. It's it's put in there and, uh. There is, um. There has been debate, uh, for, uh, for for many years with respect to, um, um. The, uh, the the purpose of that fund, uh, with respect to, uh, only, uh. Serving, uh, or or for projects that specifically relate to the, uh, village of Cardinal, uh, users versus the, uh. The township and, uh, I would say that some of the, uh. Uh, the projects that have been used in there, although, um, they're predominantly within the village of Cardinal, they 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 serve the entire township. And I think that's some of the, some some of the reasons why the the pool, for instance, was, uh, some of the funds were used, uh, there. So long, uh, it was quite a long history there, yeah, with 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 respect to that.
Yeah, the former councillor, Hunter, do you have anything to add into that discussion? You know, they're probably around when Cardinal Power was sold there.
Power was was not sold at the time, the main stipulation at the time, time was of the, all the funds. From this being invested there, pardon, was with. Said as a two hundred fifty thousand dollar loan to the Reno St. Lawrence Hydro. And we're at rest, we get paid dividends. On for our share in there and and the money from. That was gained from that was dedicated by an amalgamation that it was to be used within the village of Cardinal. Uh, it wasn't specifically dedicated, I thought it had to be. Used for, now, you know, it's.
It's been, that's why I'm asking for your experience.
Brought up a pretty narrow council I sat on. I thought that that money was going to be used for Cardinal, because it comes from a, uh, operations type. Service that it should have. Should have been dedicated back. Made it simple because there's always been an argument over where it should go. And it's been tried by different councillors over time to have it dedicated to one particular thing. They either went to the water. Or went to the sewer and and that money just went there and. That's valued at as a resident of of Cardinal. Correct. And then the debate that I brought up the last council, over that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar. Investment that was in there, that when we were on council on meters menu. The council bought. That loan. And that two hundred fifty thousand dollars was put into paying for the meters. At the time, but that interest is still being. Transferred into there, that were then into. Operation budgets for for the township.
Right. The the argument back, like the argument for that is that for the, because it was a utility. Using using the money to fund the utility would mean that that wouldn't benefit. Anyone outside of the users of that. That utility, meaning the folks at Cardinal.
That that was always.
That was always the thought of it.
Agreement between the two townships when it. When it was formed, but that's where it went.
Right.
There was lots of arguments and and. He was involved at the time, time there too, that, that. There's a lot of, but it was signed to the residents, the interests were filmed in what it was. They weren't very happy. About it. And we had millions of dollars that we'd invested in in the industrial park and in the port. The Cardinal gets the benefit. That, uh, that wasn't. There's not a lot of people at the time said. Well, on the port, one each Asian is.
Doesn't really work for a one township kind of theme, right? Yeah, it's a bit of a divisive. And it certainly, we certainly had good, healthy discussions over the, uh, the potential uses of it, uh, in the. In the last term, so so a little bit of background for.
Just an obvious thing.
Well, it's hard to use it.
Illustration, I thought, too, would have been simpler, but would have been just dedicated to something that that's what had to be used there in the. Washed every time.
Yeah, do you wanna?
Well, I just wanted to jump in and say. We have automated it in the year two thousand, twenty-three years later. Are we now just one township now? Like, are we not just?
You ask, but yes, I would, I would say absolutely we are.
No, like I. How many years it's going to take to make people realize we're one, yeah, so.
Thank you for that.
I understand. So there's further discussion on that, then move to something else.
You wanna?
I was guessing thirty-five years.
Oh, you're a beauty. Uh, okay, so, so the hot discussion over the. Pool heaters is over, I think. Any further? No, nothing further. Um. And. Will we see? I think I'm going to ask one more. Will we see more information on this, uh? Uh, Mike, or is this what we're going to see to make decisions on?
No, I can bring back further information.
I I think for me, it's, you know, I I'm gonna have a hard time supporting it unless I see, you know, something a little bit more detailed. Okay, um, I can't speak for everybody else, but but for me, I think. It's our time spend, spending that with a little bit more. A little bit more info, so, um. Can I move on? Yes. Noting attempts, okay, that's the last one. Uh, the, this one will be quick. Uh, this one is for Jason and Ice Race at the Spencerville Arena. The portable defibrillator def- defibrillator replacement, uh, if he would.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, currently, the township has five portable defibrillators. Uh, in our buildings, the down row, the Sunkey Marina, the Johnstown Community Center, two at the ingredients. One downstairs and then one upstairs. Um, we've had these in our facility for ten years and they were. In conjunction with a a project that Kevin Sancho was with the counties at that time. Worked on, uh, talking of stuff, came in. Um, the cycle for them is roughly ten years. We have not had any any issues with any of the units. We've never had to use any of the units. Uh, we do replace, uh, the batteries and the pods every two years. And, um, five of the six are due to be replaced, uh, in twenty twenty-three. Um, so, I mean, the cost of a new defibrillator is, uh, two thousand dollars. So I'll be asking for, for buying these ten thousand dollars.
But the only thing I'll say, and and you know, the deputy mayor and I have have a tiny bit of information on this through the budget of counties, they're replacing. Uh, again, this year, a a number of defibrillators as well, and I don't know if there's a bulk purchase that. You know, we've talked about purchases before. I don't know if we can get in and working on. Working with them to to do something like that, but hopefully we can explore that avenue.
Yeah, I have a contact, yeah, sorry. Go ahead. I have a contact with E M S that he deal with, with 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 the room, so I can speak with them, let them see. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure if they're the, uh, same defense within the, you know, the thing. Uh, E M S units versus the public access, the defibrillators, which are, which are quite a bit different.
Yeah, good point, uh.
In that, in that, so it may not be that.
Yeah, because I think I saw the price was seventeen thousand and I don't remember the amount. The amount of defibrillators that it was for seventeen thousand, so good, good.
We'll do, we'll, we'll certainly use the power.
Yes.
Uh, is there a life expectancy on that? Do the mayor to the C O?
Sorry.
Is there a life expectancy on it?
Yeah, they, uh, within the, within the ten year issue.
And that, that's now.
That is correct, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we have to replace the batteries anyway.
I can also comment on a defibrillator actually working because, uh. I can't tell you the gentleman, maybe he was forty years old.
Yeah.
And, uh, he dropped in. Dead in Newport. And a former firefighter from, uh, Edward Cardinal. Got the defibrillators and brought it back. And I know people who witnessed it, so the new work just sort of knows.
So I don't, is there a discussion on this at all? Yeah, to save one life, it's, you know. So I will, I will say thank you to Mr. Spencer. I, if I could. Make one comment, uh, you know, thank you for for the information, um. If I could ask for one thing, it would be just a little bit more information on, you know, a couple of, a couple of the items, so help making the decision-making process. A lot easier on this. Uh, number eight, councillor and parties notices of, oh, wait, we're going back to discussion. Sorry, yeah, we gotta zip back to discussion, sorry. I tried to shorten it a tiny bit. All right, so let's go back around to the first item. Um, which is the draft capital. Uh, but, all right, and do we want to come back to staff for any more on that?
Uh, I I would say, Mr. Mayor, what the, what staff would be looking for, or at least thus far from the preliminary business cases, they didn't seem to be anything that was, uh. Or removal, but once, once, once we get sort of confirmation that, uh. That, uh, these items have some merit, then we can certainly take that away and look at, uh. Um, some options with respect to, uh, to finding some of those revenue sources, whether that be reserves or, uh. Uh, some, some, some of the grants that are available, if we can start to put, uh, put some numbers down to bring that, uh. That portion, uh, a a lot of, uh, to 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 taxation down to a more, uh, palpable number.
Right, sure. Uh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, once we figure out where we're at. Money from here, money from there.
Yeah, this year, this year, instead of allocating some of the, uh. Uh, sources of revenue, we we thought it would be best to, uh, determine that the the projects have some merit and want to go forward and then we can start to do that.
Yeah, sure. Um, I did have, oh, man, did it just pop out of my head, though. Oh, I do, I do have one, actually, another question, sorry, uh, to the director, um, facilities director. Um, uh, Mike, there's no arena upgrades. On, on any of the, um. On any of the, I'll call it our wish list. Um, is there nothing in? Is there nothing that's ready to? You know, come forward for for capital, uh, from either arena?
At the ingredient arena, no, there's nothing that is required. Um, the special arena, um, we had the discussion when we did our, our. Facility tour back in November. Um, that's going to be discussion as to what exactly. Council that they wants to do with that facility, right? Um, so I didn't bother putting anything. As far as the compressor system and and everything right now, we're all, we're okay for. For twenty twenty-three. Um, but we don't know how long of the season we're going to operate in twenty twenty-three. So at the current time, there really isn't, and we have to do some minor, uh, alterations, uh, based on the five-year, uh, structural review. I was done with that, so it's going to be done in house by staff and under the, sorry, right, it won't be helpful.
Right. So, so I I do, like, for me, I have a, uh, I do have a concern about about that, and and I certainly, as long as that building. Uh, to me anyways, and this is just me, uh, it certainly isn't speaking for all of council, it's just speaking for me, but. As long as that building, you know, has it, has has the ability to be. To be open, I I believe that it needs to remain open and and whatever. Whatever purpose that finds, we we need to figure out what that purpose is, or, you you know. Um, and until we actually see the the full ramifications of one full year of. Of the, uh, of the new arena open, I mean, from from my perspective, I, you know, I'm not ready to. To to do, to do anything, uh, different than what we're doing, you know, now, uh, certainly wanting to see the user ship go. Not go down to nothing, but I, but I do believe that, you know, through. Um, challenges, you know, come opportunities, so I'm hopeful that. That will continue the investment so that it. That it remains viable for us for the foreseeable future. I I struggle to think that. I don't let it fall into any state of disrepair. Um, uh, knowing that the Prescott. So that that's my concern is that there's nothing on.
Yeah, no, and it's, it's, to be quite honest, really, there's, there's really nothing this year that needs to be upgraded or or done there. Over the last couple of years, we've done some electrical upgrades, uh, we've. Just completed a couple of minor things in the compressor room. That we talked about at the council meeting on on Monday night. Um, so, uh, as far as capital for this year, there really doesn't anything that. Is urgently that needs to be done. There's not even anything that's just, oh, you better do that, because if you don't, something's gonna happen.
Right. So just the five-year structural review, like painting the gurus, you know, fits it, but there's no actual major things. We're not. Neglecting anything, we're not cutting things fast. I think that's important.
There's something that needs to be repaired, then we go in and repair.
Right. Yeah, but.
Realistically, though, again, like I said, there are hostile, will have to be a discussion because. Once the doors open there. In Prescott, there there will not be a need. To have ice in in three facilities, and there just will not, I mean, we can't rent. Both facilities to a hundred percent capacity right now, so to open up a third door. It's just not going to work.
Sure, and and I, and I'm fearful that when it comes to. You know, our ability to to work with the councils of Prescott and Augusta on. You know, future operating agreements that we weren't able to, uh, agree upon in in the past, that, you know, um. In the future, that may still. Uh, even though it won't be, you know, at the capacity or initially that we we hope it's at, that. Maybe there there'll be a a continued use for it as long as it has, you know, uh, some viability left in it, um. And that we give it a chance, especially if it, you know, comes through an operating agreement with our neighbors. Uh, to, you know, to see that, you know, that open and then. And all that's going to put some pressure on. The folk sitting to the left to hopefully work out some, you know, some good deals with them as as things go by, but, you know. Certainly want to see that, uh, facility as long as it's viable, stay, stay open, so. But I just, my concern for this year is that we're not leaving things that need to be done. And and you've answered that and made it very clear. Okay.
Something needs to be, uh, worked on and repaired, it will be completed.
Okay, cool, all right. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Now, discussion. How do we want to do this? I'm looking for you for a tiny bit of guidance on. On this. I mean, we've absorbed a ton of information tonight, you know, um. I don't know that without actually hearing business cases and being able to ask questions, are you able to do scratching off of your lists and? And stuff like that. I mean. There's several items that need more information, like the Highway Two project. I mean, we need far more information on on it. I'm not even sure that we can go much further for a discussion. My only comment is, you know, it's been, uh, nine applications or eight applications to get to where we're at now. We've got. Four million, three million dollars in combined funds from from counties and. And to us from the feds and the province. I mean, it's hard to imagine. What are we going to pay thirty cents on a dollar, forty cents on a dollar, something like that? Like, it's hard to imagine that. That we wouldn't move that project, move that project forward. It needs to get done. Uh, and I think from a standpoint of making sure that we close that gap that's been identified in the AM. In the asset management, I'm not supposed to call it an AM. Um, that would help, you know, further that moderate and get that moderate back back down into the low risk. I guess that's the fur I'm referring to, isn't it? The financial indicator, um, that would help get that there as well, and I think that that's money that has to get, has to get spent. We we have to figure out funding for it, but I think that. It's spent, so I'm not even sure that that one's a. Really a discussion item, in in my eyes, at this point, there's lots of things on here that might be considered wish lists, but. I don't know at this point if we're ready to. Anybody can chime in if they want. Um, I asked to have the Cardinal tennis courts, uh, included, not a, I wasn't thinking at a full rebuild, I was hoping to see. Uh, some options to to make them, you know, sort of multi-use courts. Um, not for replacements, but. Um, you know, I mean, I I certainly am not going to support it, a a replacement of two hundred and fifty-six thousand. I was. Open for a little more creativity on that, from a totem ranch road replacement until we know what North Grenville's going to do, or I find that a. A difficult one. Um. Uh, I know in my perspective, I guess I'm leading the charge here. Um, I know from my perspective, the Scott Street, uh, transfer station, it is a project that that needs to, I think, I believe in it, I I think it needs to go forward. But. I just think we might be missing out. Uh, on not dreaming big enough with it, and and I just, I think that there. I just think we might be missing out uh on not dreaming big enough with it, and and I just, I think that they're. They're they're, you know, uh, thinking back to our service delivery review and certainly seeing the issues that folks have with. With uh getting rid of garbage and stuff, I I just think that maybe, you know, we have a way there and we're going to change the way that we do things. That maybe in that plan we need to, you know, I think councillor, uh, are, sorry, I, it's gonna take me a while, John. I have to call you John, um, uh, Mr. Hunter has has alluded to that, you know, year by year by year, maybe it's something that we just need to look at. Continuing to fund and continuing to grow over over the term of council, so, um, I just, I'm not sure that we're dreaming big enough with that one. And those were the green lines on my, on my list, like, for my, for my concerns, you know, the the rest of it, I've got a couple that are. One hundred percent, uh, um, guesses and and I, I had huge concerns with. With the the pool heater and um without seeing more information and and I know. That the dog park's gonna be an extremely hard sell and a very, very difficult, you know, financial year. Um, but the parking lot upgrades there are certainly gonna be uh considerations, but I. It's the rest of them, I have a hard time taking them out, so. That's the mayor's two cents, I don't know if anybody else wants to. Speak or or I'll jump in with a little bit. Not sure it's providing any direction, but it's just how I feel.
Yeah, no, I I mean, I think I agree with a lot of what you were saying there, I think to your point, I mean, but really with the uh, with the Scott Street's transfer station. Uh, at least starting something at this point in time is 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 probably a good idea, I mean, uh. You know, clearing the land doesn't necessarily dictate that we both have to get past that point, so I think that's something that we can, you know, so. I would keep that going, uh, uh, you know, bridges, you know, I don't wanna be that community that didn't fix the bridge that we should have, so, uh. Uh, that seems like not an option, like I said, so, but it's a big, it's a big ask for next year on top of that, so that's why I think we should put some, some money aside on that one.
Um, I'm stuck with one second, is there, do we know of any streams of of funding or grants? Or, you know, like, is there, I mean, is there anything for bridges and roads and?
In addition to. Through through there, we're we're certainly looking, uh, with with respect to those, I I. Further than you think, uh, like specific for bridges, it's it's usually along that core infrastructure, um, programs. Then then it is, you know, specific bridges.
Certainly, when we were, what maybe say bridges was when we were at, listening to the um asset management plan, there were. Um, lots of municipalities coming to the open mic session, talking to the folks from North Bay, and they were. Uh, the debate was who had the most bridges and, and I think that the the number was ninety three was the highest one that I heard. And I was like, thank gosh, we don't have ninety three bridges to maintain, so. Um, ninety three of these would be a difficult ask for her, so I was just thinking maybe there was some, some, something out there, if somebody's request. Sorry.
No, that's okay, uh, you you, like I said, so, bridges, I mean, I, I feel that's not really an option, I want to have some as color of option, like all of that. Uh, with regards to actually, uh, this could get me into hot water, but, uh, you know, I don't know what the actual business case would be. For tennis courts, four hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars roughly during the year. Uh, so that was one that, you know, I look at, you know, worry better with that one, I mean, we know there's some, you know, some part of that, uh. Uh, that Johnstown, but sorry, I was excluding what's funded on the Johnstown side, and I know there was some discussion about, you know, that number maybe is is anything we can do with that. But, uh, I think that's a different conversation to have, uh, and then I think we should, uh, you know, of this, uh, we've certainly the roads, which we didn't talk much about, obviously. Uh, I I do think we should pick something in there, you know, pick a dollar amount, and we were entertained and, uh, about, for sure, whatever. We think are the the worst case causes there, and so we can propose.
There, with with this, there's no, like, even with the dollar value at the bottom. Or, for, you know, there's the user fees, there's, um, so from taxation's two point one million, right? Is that, or is it six hundred and forty one thousand?
That's six forty one is just for public works, the the total.
Just the public works, the total is 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 two million, one hundred, one hundred thousand.
And and that's assuming you're you're doing everything on those roles, too, like, that was just put there for a discussion item, because I think. When we do budget number one, uh, there wasn't enough on there, because I think the only we had was. Was Edison and Perry, which were carryover, and I think the question back to staff was, why are there no roads on the list, so we. Brought the the most urgent uh ones forward.
To just to the chair, so maybe I misunderstood, then when I did my math, I thought that the two point one billion was the sum of the public works and the sum of the, uh. Uh, it it was plus that six forty one, but I didn't think it factored in any of the resurfacing projects in there, did I, for that one?
Yeah, that's like, that's a problem in my spreadsheet with the tool.
Yeah, cuz I I think I have one point, I did write it down, I think I have one point three billion or something in these various road things, which is. You know, uh, I'm just saying we should pick some of that, but I don't, I don't believe that was in the two point one billion, but what, but also was not in there is the, uh. Uh, whenever the, yeah, the the mayor is able to, uh, to get from the counties for, uh, for the. Hundred and two project, right, so.
Yeah, that that number's unknown still, correct?
We'll know that on, on February seventh, is when the tenders was.
Yeah, cuz there's, there's. There's two point seven million right now in. In the final total number, right, of the three point seven, am I wrong in that? We know that often, how much of that is just County Road two? There's seven hundred, there's eight sixty, there's eight seventy seven, and there's two fifteen, right?
The road part would be just over, just over a million. You take the two highlighted yellow lines and then the rest falls under wastewater and water. Because where.
Oh, that's in the user fee one, right? Right, sorry, right, so, so I I went down to the wrong page, so. So a million then out of that is.
Um, is rough.
Is rough, it's right.
But we we would also, would we know of that one point five million dollars that's in there for government grants and funding? We would allocate that back through all of the steps, right, so until we have that number. Then it would be allocated across the whole project, but we just left it on one line just for discussion purposes.
Right, so just for perspective, if we didn't borrow for that million dollars. And and we paid it all through taxation at sixty four thousand dollars per percent, and it'd be thirty three percent tax increase. To fund all of these projects, so. Welcome to budget twenty twenty three.
Yeah.
So, so my, how do we get this down to? And and do the projects that we want? How are we gonna get this down to a reasonable? Number for this year?
I think the the best way to get this through the chair to to get this to a reasonable number. Is to, once the tenders come in, see what work can actually be done in twenty twenty three, and what might get deferred to twenty twenty four. And then we would have a better, uh, better chance at at what, uh. You know, what we, what the impact of taxation would be, so the other thing to consider too is we. We had, uh, I think our bu- capital budget last year was. Was five point two million dollars and, uh, we have one point three million going to to whip. So, um, and granted, most of it is related to the the big drainage projects, but if. What we're undertaking is like the County Road two, which is a major project, I mean, unless, um, you know. With discussions that we've had, um, if it was one of the big companies that had multiple. High hose and stuff, then, yeah, we we can get it done, uh, but if we go with the with the smaller vendor that can't do that, then we'll definitely be. Doing this over two year period, so then, you know, as long as we don't lose any of the funding, and that was the, that was a key part of this. We just don't want to, that's that's a security of this.
Work too hard to get that, fun, the staff is put so many applications and so much time in to get this project where it's at. It's crazy that we just can't, so.
Looking at it from a holistic perspective, uh, C A O and I have have chatted about this. Um, the one thing that we can do or present to to council that aside from. You know, the County Road two and other projects that could be recently done, and you, do we want to use this as a, as a catch up here? To get rid of the the stuff that's in with and and have a realistic approach of what we can do and and execute that. It's just, the, what what this says here for for ten million dollars in capital is. Is these are projects that need done and and need to be done in the short to medium term, these aren't long term projects, so. You know, uh, nine point seven million total capital, that's two years worth of work. Uh, based on on prior capital budget, so certainly don't expect that all of this is going to. Think it's done, but this this is a good picture of of what the next couple of years are gonna look like.
Yeah, they're gonna be tough.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, and and we know, I know we've had this discussion, and I and I and I like where the treasurer wants to go with. Look, having before, look for for four to five years, we can tally up all that, because, you know, there may be a year three or four, or it's not as bad as we think it is. Be able to, to do that Shelby of dollars, which in my home, it'd be, soon when we get to that, that stage, and I know that's not something we can do very quickly, right? You do look forward to when that happens, I mean, I appreciate, but we're pretty, we get close to that, so.
And I I think the the key as well is, as much as recognizing it's, it is gonna be difficult, it's difficult for everybody, look there. You know, I've sent you to the C A O, everybody, everybody around us is, uh, everybody's tax increases so far as to what those percentages are going to be, so. We all know that we're probably gonna be thoroughly posted in on. In line with that number, but my concern is that we've identified, you know, that that gap. I'm sure that we're not investing enough back in, I know, um, that we we heard it from, you know. Uh, two people on this committee over the past years that we haven't, we haven't invested that two to four percent. You know, per year over the last four years, and had we have done that, we wouldn't find ourselves in, in the paper this year the way that. We're probably gonna pay it, so, um, I just wanna, I guess I just wanna make sure that we don't, we don't end up underinvesting. Right, and taking, taking too much of the break is, is we're just gonna find ourselves putting the next group that sits here. Uh, in four years, the same risk that we find ourselves sort of in as well, and it's. Uh, at the same time, that's a tough thing, because you have to respect that everyone's putting the trust more to heat your home, to. You know, pay your bills, to buy groceries, to everything, sure, it's a, it's an all round, very difficult, it's a, it's a very, very difficult. Uh, thing, so.
And and going back to through the chair, uh, to budget meeting number one, that that was what, uh. Um, prior treasurer had had tried to put in place as far as, uh, proposing the idea of a capital levy, so that we would raise this money. Slowly for time to 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 help with, uh, some of the, some of the more medium to long term. She doesn't address the short to to medium terms, but if we have that incorporated, then. If that fund will build and will be able to help us.
Right, and I, and I think, um, you know, in in addition to that, the. Realization of some of that, you know, the green surplus from, from the work that managed to bring in and almost an extra six hundred thousand into. Into the budget for us, it put six hundred thousand extra into revenues for, for the port of Johnstown on, you know, unrealized. Materials that they that they had there, and, um, that certainly takes a little bit of stress off of. Off of this for this year, it certainly gives us the ability to to have, you know, a little bit of breathing. Creating room in a difficult, difficult year, and I think we all need to understand that, uh, hopefully, I think we've been told that that'll be a. A stable source for the next, uh, four years, but hopefully, you know, that 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 remains, remains the case and. Uh, it will help alleviate a little bit of that pressure that you were saying, Chris, uh, you know, and and give us a little bit of juggling. Oh, so, yeah.
What what I would, uh, say, not heard it correctly, if I'm. Uh, if I'm wrong, I I I haven't heard that anything is, uh, um, off the list as of now. What what we'll do, uh, from a staff perspective is we'll return with that, look at some, um.
I I, if I can cut you off for one sec, I, I like, I mean, it's crazier. I I wanted the Cardinal tennis courts in for budget consideration, because I, that something needs to happen with that area, but it's it's unmaintained. It's getting to the point where it's not safe, um, you know, with the fencing and and those sort of things, I'm quite prepared to take it off. Um, I was the one who asked to have it on, but it was more to have it, you know, a a discussion about it, um. You know, make everyone aware that it is a project of, uh, that I would like to see over the next four years, I know it's not gonna happen this year. Uh, but I wanna keep it on everyone's mind, so that as funding comes available for trillion grants for other applications that. I'd really like to push some multi-surface courts, uh, forward, whether it's, you know, dry land training, whether it's an outdoor rink in the winter. The lots of things that it could be utilized for, but it's underutilized and impossible to use, pretty much at this time, so I'm fully prepared. Uh, to remove that, I don't know that any staff needs to do any more work on that project this year, um, I don't think it's gonna get support or or funding this year. And I certainly wouldn't want it to, uh, to take any attention away from the need, then, or the deputy mayor's fought for in in Johnstown, so. I'm quite happy to take that off there and and remove that number for for this year, I'll wanna have it come back for a later discussion again next year, but. Um, I'm fine, yeah, I, my opinion, that one can go, I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but. That that swipe would would reduce that number by a fair bit, right off the bat, everybody okay with taking that off? I don't think I need to ask John that one, um. Um, everybody okay with that, I think it was nodding heads for that one, so, then you can, there, see, now you got one off. Anyone else wanna bring something forward that, you know, they absolutely one hundred percent feel needs to come off, uh?
Yeah, I can do the researches in roads on, uh, as you know, really Armstrong Road, two hundred twenty six thousand, they. Think we already want to do that.
Do you wanna leave that on?
Myself.
Um, can I ask one question first before we go? Sorry, just to, just to where those ones came from, were those the, um, the the projects that came forward? For the paving, the paving ones, were they right directly through the asset management plant, like? Um, plan, were they the ones that needed most urgent and replacement of the wish list? Or did we ask specifically for those?
Uh, through the chair, uh, there was a couple that were asked for specifically, last name, which was Armstrong. The old, I believe, I think it was referred to as Rock, but was named as Armstrong.
Realized damage.
And the other one was Sophia.
Okay.
The other ones are from the outside management plant, Cedar Grove Road is at the top of the list on the asset management plan.
Yep.
And the other ones are high, high numbers also.
Okay, so any of those would would get us, you know, would keep us in alignment, other than maybe Armstrong and Sophia? Would keep us in in line with with our asset management plan?
Yeah, for the most part of what's available, I mean, there's other ones like re-stream, things like that, that we have other. Uh, like water stuff going on there, that we have to, um, remediate as well, so. There's always influences on the numbers, but Cedar Grove was the number one, uh, of the asset management. Uh, this section of Cedar Grove Road, uh, was, had the least amount of vertical, horizontal directions, just because we're located at the front end. Um, we would probably would like to just continue, but that is the area where you're gonna have more dig out stuff, so. Uh, if council decides in the next three or four years, uh, to go ahead or something happens with the job site challenge. And we need to consider, you know, doing realignments and different things there, that we could be, you know, wasting half the life of the overlay.
Yeah, and that's, and I think that that's, you know, as we want to continue to win the discussions with, um, continuing discussions with, um. You know, uh, different agencies, I I struggle with making, you know, a. You know, a a long term large investment on on that one, but it's the one that that's at the top of the top of the plan, so.
Yeah, through the chair, and that section, I think, was the one with the least of attention, and. For as far as straightening out everything with the four sixteen going over and winding lanes and so forth, it's there's some restrictions that would. Make it a better candidate than the rest of the road where the alignments are, you know, there's bigger curves and so forth.
Yeah. The the standard that it's built to, would it? Like, would it have to be rebuilt to a different standard if, say, a job site challenged it filter, like, we'd be tearing it up either way, right?
I suspect so, if you're gonna have heavy trucks on there, it's only a single lift on that road right now.
Right.
It's not designed, and that's one of the reasons we have, you know, the issues with uh.
Yeah.
Uh the E R route being are.
Yeah.
Not officially E R.
Put that up for twenty twenty-four, okay, we see what's going on with that line. Well, I think we asked, no, we asked to have these projects added on, right?
Sophia on and also is another situation where part of the section is is. Okay, probably for no play, but on the Johnstown uh drainage program, we ran at the blue clay in the road, so. It would be highly recommended to get geotech worked in before you put overlays and so forth, but because uh. You could put an overlay on, it could be gone in two years if the road's gonna clay under.
It's just gonna push and.
Potentially, they could.
I I certainly am, uh I guess while we have the the director of operations here, like. Is is the uh, you know, I know that there's a recommendation for that section of Cedar Grove, is that, is it? And it's and it's in high up in the um the asset management plan for replacement, is that? Is it something that it could wait one more year until we have a tiny bit more information on the possibilities of uh? Job jobs. Job site challenge discussion.
So, I I just wanna, I just wanna remind the committee uh that uh the the pad and overlay. All 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 of those items were not in the original twenty twenty-three budget.
We asked that.
Per 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 additions.
Where did it?
Okay, correct, so.
So, okay, so then.
So, so the rea- so the reality is that the the feeling was that we were not gonna do. In in in.
We weren't gonna do anymore anymore.
Correct.
So we can, we can cut that.
If 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 those need to be, so uh we're. A- a- as we indicated, we'll go, we'll we'll go back and we'll take a look and try to bring something back that's a little more palatable. Uh with respect to the uh to the to the projects, funding sources and 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 reduce that sort of uh. Um capital taxation ask uh for the next uh for the next budget.
Yeah, and then we can get sort of, then maybe we can start to whittle it down, because we're at a number now that I don't know that we can. We can even, where I don't even know where we start whittling down this.
It it it's a, it's a non-starter in this, i- i- in the sense of everything coming from taxation, but we also have to look at the. Not not only funding sources, but uh really uh the ability of 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 staff to complete it, we can only do. And man, so many projects within within a year.
Oh, yeah.
We real, we 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 really have to working. At some of the projects, especially county road two, that's gonna be a pretty large commitment of 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 staff resources, so. We're we're limited on uh on some of those other areas, so.
Hey, I I don't know which one you're doing, did you hand your hand up earlier and I missed, I thought you did, but I wasn't.
One comment on when you're looking at. Look ahead, look ahead what your what your council's planning and doing in the next four years, and you brought not in patent overlay for Sophia Street. What's your pro? Plans for for the drainage and area. Plan was to extend it on up, you just add an overlay and then in two years' time, you'll decide. You got the money to try to extend it on up, or you just be terrible.
Right, yeah, of course. That's why he's here. I was gonna say is, you know, whether we we do them or not do them because of human capacities, you know, uh. There's a lot of these that are very similar and and you know, even but the money, and I I must say we do, but I think that's part of the equation is is what does it look like? Uh including all the ones we can't get, or I know you can't get money for things you're gonna do maybe in the road, but. Uh there's a pun too, um but uh, you know, putting this money aside, because the if they're so similar, those could be an opportunity, you know, to say, you know what, we have. X number of dollars put aside, we can actually do more roads, you get economies of scale potential in your pricing, as well as the efficiencies, but you also do. A longer stretch of the of the roads, right, so um that's why I think it's important to see these here. So, so what do you need, do you need any direction from us on at this point, I mean? Or where are we, where are we going from here, what do you?
I don't uh I I don't think we need any further direction at this point from uh from committee, other than I would suggest that. Um we need uh choose a next budget meeting.
That's the direction you want.
That 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 is so, and in looking potentially at um. February twenty-first, it's it's Tuesday, it's just the the family day falls on the twentieth. Or I would suggest it in twenty.
The twenty-first works planned for me. About everyone else works, was was the meeting available to cancel or are we not pushing it out there? Yeah, twenty-first. No, truly, we're not over, we're doing.
We are not, uh uh no.
Right, so we're just not doing meetings for that.
What, so what do you shoot for, David, everybody try first?
Yeah, Tuesday.
But won't we have a regular meeting on there? You're saying our next budget meeting?
Yes, because we have an administration and operations uh in two weeks' time. And that Monday right now is.
Yeah, so the twenty-first uh nodding of heads for the twenty-first. You're good for that. How about yourself, John, are you okay for that one? Yeah, are you away council? Good, so everybody's, looks like twenty-first. Six. Yep, for me, it's fine.
At what time?
Six o'clock.
That's fine, yeah, good.
Through the chairs, see, we got an extra day of studying as well over that long holiday meeting as well.
Well, we we will endeavor to try to give some action.
Okay, and. And so, we're not at. Point, we're at a point yet where you bring us back an option that's at a certain percent, I think we still need, we still need to. We still need to have you guys give us or new folks, you know, staff, give us some some further recommendations, or do you want directions for us to give you a solid number to try?
Uh I would, I would suggest at this particular time that uh we we come back and bring something uh. Uh back to uh back to maybe.
Okay, and I, one one further question, I know the answer to this, or at least I think I know know the answer, but that's probably. What is wrong with me, and I'll fire this one to uh to the treasurer if I if I may, and. Um I know I've asked it before, uh it it fluctuates every once in a while, but surplus or deficit, twenty twenty-two.
Uh where we're at today, and what I put into the reports for the thirteen. Is a sixty-seven thousand dollars surplus.
So one percent surplus.
Point five percent.
One percent tax. One percent tax levy, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, and then, and that would normally be directed to reserves. Go ahead.
So, yeah, yeah, just it's. That 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 may change.
Right, right, but as of right now, we're not in a big, my worry is that we're not seeing two hundred thousand dollars in deficit at this point.
No, we closed the the December G L for transactions. Uh so anything that we get from now and and thanks to all the operations staff for giving that to us by the thirty-first when we wanted it. Um but there have been at least travelers and uh it'll be up to the leaders to decide. Uh whether they're gonna move them into the prior period, so they likely will, but uh. Right now, it doesn't look material, um and there might be some year-end adjustments they might want us to.
Sure, but we're 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 like right on zero, right on balance, basically.
Yeah, and and in my report, you'll you'll see where where that. Really kind of falls under.
Yeah, okay, okay, good, 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 well, that just, I that's always been a concern for mine and 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 it's always, I always struggle with that discussion of. Two to four, and I always say zero and. Never know where we're at, and I get frustrated because, you know, from a business perspective. Until I know where I was last year, it's harder to go into to next year because I may have to make up for for last year a little bit. I don't wanna. Good, go ahead.
Um thank you, I just need uh. I need some help here uh to do a chair to the to the C E O, the research in roads uh. This patent overlay, I get a little, I get a little scared, I don't feel, let's put it this way, I don't feel warm and comfy for sure. It's only guaranteed for ten years, right, roughly, that's roughly, I mean, there's no guarantees, but we're we're shooting for ten years, is that right?
I think that's probably on the high end.
Yeah, and that's a high end, okay? And I have a hard time like with this, we got two point four million bucks in there. Of of uh had an overlay. And in ten, that's high, so say, now you make me feel even worse, eight years. I'm not sure if we should be, even if we throw something out, that's fine, but. If we if we pave it and do a good job and get what, twenty-five?
It it depends on the road base, I'm sorry, through the chair, it uh depends on the road base, uh usually overlay. If we do an overlay on a heavily cracked roadway, a road surface. The this the surface cracking, you put the overlay on and it's like a mirror, it's like a mirror. You know, you put the pad and had an overlay over top of that cracked surface, eventually that will reflect, reflected cracking will show through again. You know, what the seams did, and that could be, and then traffic volumes have a pretty big role in that, um weights.
I know. I have a hard time, I'd rather make, rather maybe just pick one project and do it. Top notch, right?
I think. In fairness, we asked for all.
Oh, I know the objects. Yeah. So when I see that ten years and now it scares me eight years, I'm willing to back out. Oh, no, I am on on my wish list and 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 put money towards. To do it properly and and not as many of these projects, so. I can really skim that down.
I'll I'll get, I'll get there, just a second, but the director of operations.
Just for a bit of perspective to that, um the full depth reconstruction is estimated at a million dollars a kilometer. So.
A million dollars plumber?
Yeah, so.
Good. Good to know.
Yeah, that's very high.
Yes, excellent segue to my question is, how many kilometers of paved road do we have, I took up the exact number, but. I feel like it's a hundred and twenty or something like that.
I I I believe it is a hundred and two or a hundred and five kilometers of uh. Hot mix, there's a big uh east premium on the surface. Treatment and then they about sixty-seven gravel.
Yes. So if we're gonna do it all that way, it's only a hundred and twenty billion dollars to that point, right, so but. You know, essentially, if they last ten years, we should be doing twelve kilometers a year of of hot mix if we're doing it. I don't see the cheap way every eight years, right, so you get, that that's where it gets tricky. You know, you gotta spend something every year, otherwise you get behind, it's a ball all the time.
Through the chair, simple math is, yeah, but. Five five kilometers. Yeah. But there are some preservation techniques that you can use, and then there there are a number of those, I. It's a, it's a big cost.
Yeah, it it's. And you don't wanna fall behind, though. No, and we have seven or eight kilometers worth of, or ask, you know, for the better way of saying it, right, so.
Yeah, I've been really hoping to think this.
Well, I think we need to remember that none of those were actually there identified as needs on which said management plan, but we asked for them because there was nothing in. This year's budget out of respect to staff, we asked for them to be put in, so um. But it's with medicine, right, because it gives you that here, and it lets you know that you have to make that continual. Uh investment back in, we're gonna have to make sure that we. We do that, so.
Through the chair is for clarity, um you want me to leave everything as is for the patent overlay? Or should I take them back out? And and then. See how it looks without those in that.
Yeah, I think uh through through the chair, we'll 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 come back what uh we think is manageable for us to do in the near. And and with a a couple other options.
Yeah, so you gotta remove them.
I I I I would uh highly anticipate that they will not be on the uh.
Good. Okay, uh so, and I recognize the time, so um it so you're good with direction? You're, we, so we, we're not at a point where I where I need to rally the numbers, and so we're. We're good, we'll wait, wait for another meeting or two and walk our way. Well, it's gonna be hard, so this part of it, so.
Uh and uh through the chairs, while we purposely love the plumbing out.
Right.
So, and again, budget meeting number one, I did say there was there was about one point five million uh available that we can allocate, so.
Yeah.
Um we'll take a first step at allocating that to these middle caps, and then and next budget will present. What we would think would be a true representation of the capital ask for taxation.
Right, and then, so then that's when we can get creative, look at reserves, look at other options, look at funding possibilities and and start to, you know. Counter what.
We 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 will start signing some uh some some values from reserves to to these projects as a starting point, so then. I'll put you there.
Yeah, so just correctly through the chip, so that one point five million does not include. Um that I keep saying like this money's the mayor's gonna get from the counties, but it does not include that, I know we had this assumed nine fifty, but less uh here. It does not include that nine fifty, that's just above the.
Okay.
Okay. Uh so, we're good? Yeah. Uh further comments from? You want in on this at all? Um okay, so we are then somewhere on this list, right? That's where we're at, council requires notice of motion, okay, so number eight, council requires notice of motion, does anyone have uh any inquiries? Or notice of motion to bring forward, not discussion items, inquiries or notices of motion? Not a discussion.
Okay, I have a couple, uh I'd like to bring up on the C D C meeting and want to see uh a path. In the back of Albert Street and going to the Johnstown Community Center, this has been going on for about four years, I know. We'd like to get fixed up somehow, maybe not much, and so on, so I'll bring you, I'll bring in that up on. If I could, uh with the new chair. Bringing that up under the C D C for for Monday meeting.
Just stop for one sec, is that appropriate committee for that one? Those are just the, that's the quickest committee that could deal with it.
It it may, it it may be, but with it. Uh when you kind of having the understanding of what is it may look that. Like, is it just the general discussion, like?
So let's just do that as a general discussion, then.
Yeah, just general discussion, wow. I'd like to get things moving on for for this year's budget, because I don't think it's an operation, I don't think it's a big. A big issue or a big. Big expense, let's put it that way, I just like to get it done another way because we've been uh four years now.
Might be good to just have a little bit more information provided by the deputy mayor and. Stuff to try to.
With some. So yes, so you made your, you made your notice of motion, you wanted on the C D C, now you need to provide more information. So yes, so you made your, you made your notice of motion you wanted on the CDC, now you need to provide more information on that, I think, to staff. So they can be ready for the discussion, okay?
Absolutely, okay, okay.
What's the next one?
And I have another one, uh, when I was in Toronto, at at Roma, uh, but I. Ran into a deputy mayor, and I like to put forward on this CDC is uh, for the boat launch in the Galapagos Canal. At pain display machine. For information on that, and I will have information for you to go forward on the C.
So, so another discussion item? Yes, and then same. To the CEO, is that the same scenario then, want more information, it's the CEO, I have some.
The difficulty that that I'm having, it's it's Thursday evening, package for CDC goes out. One morning.
Yeah.
I'm finding it hard to be able to.
Well, I forgot.
Beat that, beat that, yeah.
So, is the A O agenda too full to entertain it?
A grateful, like, actually, uh, answer a couple uh, items. For for Monday night, uh, just uh, to to lessen the load on uh, on on. Operations, so. But if 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 at least that information can uh. Be be provided, we can do a little bit of of research from the staff level and and get that onto a committee soon.
If a staff, if if so, like, the deputy mayor shares that to staff, is that something that staff can share in correspondence? So that all council members have, have it, and if, um, so that that way they're prepared for it through correspondence. Um, for whatever committee it comes up at, that way if it is a full discussion, then they're. So can it be include any of the information that?
We're, yeah, we've been working through that.
Yes, any information the deputy provides, you'll provide through, through the um. The whatever it's called, of course, correspondent, correspondence, thank you. Good with that?
Yeah, I'm good, I'll send that off, the one for shared tonight.
Okay, good, so further, further inquiries or requests of motion. Hearing, uh, none, mayor, sir. You good? I thought I heard you go. Now I know why the mayor was always looking at me. We hear out of this here. Yeah, I mean, yeah, um, it happens, it happens with that desk, um. So no further inquiries or notice of motion, there's no mayor report tonight. Um, I guess I will say though, um, this first again, thank you um, for joining the committee. Um, Karen and and thanks, um, John for coming back, uh, and looking forward to working with both of you. Uh, over the next couple of years, uh, and your valuable insights. Um, I will said that, we'll go to question period, uh, staff have any questions? Hearing none, we have, and there's nobody in line, uh, there's no closed session, I need a mover and forger. Move break, councillor Chris Ward, seconded by deputy mayor Steve Dillavah, uh, no discussion, all in favor.